America.
Welcome to our regular Monday meeting of April, early April here in 2024. And we have a couple of things we're going to do here, a little out of order, one of which is footnote, and one of which is not. So the first one we're going to do is with the trustees approval to do this. I want to take consent agenda item number one and bring it to the top so that we can allow our firefighters to go to drills and be prepared for what they do for us here. So if that's okay, I would like to first move or have somebody move to appoint the following fire department officers. Fire chief Michael Bayshore, first assistant chief Kevin Crowe, second assistant Wilfred Kenny, third assistant Paul Marosi, and secretary Stanley DeLong. Trustee Fundanza, trustee Price Bush, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now at this point, I'm going to actually ask trustee Bernadette to join me and ask the firefighters that we just named to their posts to join us over in this direction, and we will swear them in. Please raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of fire chief or assistant fire chief. Of the Balsas Spa Fire Department. In accordance with the laws of the Bills of Balsas Spa. In the state of New York. As well as the Constitution of the Balsas Spa Fire Department. To the best of my ability. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, we're going to continue out of order here, but with a definite sense of order as it's time to hear about Wizwall Park and the renovations that are being proposed and planned to a certain degree, but still a lot, lot of chance here for public feedback, et cetera. We'll discuss some of that a little bit more later. But Jeff Anthony from Studio A, who's been working on this with us, is with us and will also have some what he's talking about on our Zoom screen in a moment here. But Jeff, thanks for all your hard work and working with us, met a few times with you and thankful to have you on board with this along the way with this project.
Thanks Frank. Who is going to click these on? You are. Thank you. So in a minute, I'll ask you just pull up the master plan. There you go, it's on. Well, we've been working with the Village Park and Tree Board since last fall, and it's been a pleasure. One of the nice things about it is that the Village and Park and Tree Board have done an enormous amount of work in following the public, both not only the public, private citizens, but also the business community for comments and concerns and information about Wizwall Park. They got fantastic response, fantastic reviews as far as I'm concerned. We've worked for years in other villages and communities. I've never seen better response. It was very good. It's commendable to the community, commendable to you or to your citizens that they care for this park. So what did we learn with that? It was very important that we spent a lot of time understanding the park to begin with. We spent time in the park with the board and we walked around, we spent time visiting the park several occasions, watched it undergo certain activities and things like that. But most importantly, the user survey from both the residents and business community kind of said that this park is a passive park, which we all totally agree with. I mean, it is a passive park. There are no sports fields. There's no active recreation. There's no, it's passive park. It's people's park. And things that happen in a park that are basically events and happenings. Events include movies in the park, holiday tree lighting, car shows, concerts, birdhouse fest and things like that. And we learned also out of these surveys that what do people do in the park on a daily basis? People like to just stop into the park while they're shopping, just hang out. They like to read books in the park, read newspapers, like to eat in the park on their lunch hour or something like that. They like to walk in the park. They seem to like to sit there and watch people and watch the landscape and see what's going on. It's a nice park, a village park. So the user survey kind of also told us, say, what would you like to have in this park when we, when you asked your residents and business community? Biggest thing on the agenda was improve space for vendors. I mean, one of the biggest happenings in this park are your events. And the open space for the vendors to stage, set up, and to display their wares and do that to allow for people to come in and mull around and enjoy the park was the biggest response. Also, other responses include improving landscaping, improved seating, add benches, add a pavilion that could possibly be used for some performances and stuff like that. And pavilions should have chairs and tables. Fix the fountain, either fix it or move it or do something with it, but make it usable, make it nice. And some people ask it as a small children's play area. Like I said, this is not an active park, but when people are in the park with their families, they've got kids, and so the kids might want to do something while the older folks are sitting around, their parents are sitting around. So the kids want something to do too. So a little bit of activity for the kids. But in the long run, the user survey basically concluded, I'm going to quote right from it, said, "This is a park for community events, family-friendly activities, and farmers market." It's a safe gathering space. That's what everybody wanted. That's the thought that we took from the surveys. So where do we go from there? Well, we spent a good amount of time with the, with the park and treatment board, and we came up with two plans. One plan, which they picked us on the wall. But what did we go through with the park committee? One, we presented a fairly traditional, I would call a classic village park. That's on the wall. We also presented a very eclectic kind of off-the-wall plan for a park, which would radically change the character of the park. Correctly so, and I totally agree, the Village Park and Tree Board picked the classic approach. This is an urban park. It's a classic building square, and that's what we have here. So what is in this park? And I'm going to try to keep this to ten minutes. Okay, in this park. Basically, the park centers around a classic circular walkway, which is accessed by actually the walkways coming from the major entrance points into the park. In watching the park and in watching people use the park, that's a major entry point. That's a major entry point, and these two are major entry points. Even though you have it on the corner, flanking on the corner, but the traffic pattern seems to be following these, these routes. Ironically, there is no path to get from here to there in this park at this moment. So that needed to be corrected. The part of the, the walkway system culminates in the center at a circular area, which has a 16-inch tall seat wall, and there's landscape in the middle. And discussions with the park board and tree committee, we determined that that was the best location for where the village's Christmas tree would go in the future. I originally thought the flagpole might go there, but we all had discussions and said, "The Christmas tree belongs there." As part of the village's ceremonies and things like that. We relocated the flagpoles at this point over here on access to the entrance off of Front Street. So the walkways that come through here are all going to be kind of paved with a brick paper that is a simulated concrete brick paper. So that is the basic feature of the park's circulation system. Now, surrounding the park, the sidewalks are in good shape. They remain, are green, come around there. And at this corner, or here at the intersection, front and low streets, is where we're going for those relocating the spring. As a feature, as a visual element, with a couple of historic interpretive panels. And that, I understand from Caitlin Piranha, that they are hopefully having a sculptor come up with a really nice design for a kind of a unique spring that's going to go there. And that's going to be a cool element in the park. The other elements in the park are basically, that were requested also by the, by the, by the surveys, was to keep a pavilion in the park. Pavilion where it's located now is roughly this location. That is probably the best location for this pavilion. It's kind of isolated. And it's, it's, it's in an area which is kind of quiet. Pavilion that's proposed is going to be a classic pavilion. That's going to basically be a Victorian style. And you know, be raised up, graded a little bit, so then you could have a couple of performances or, or somebody can make speeches or do something there. But it'll also be big enough to house picnic tables and benches and things like that. To the east of it will be a very small children's playground, and to the west of it will be some picnic tables. I wonder why I got, I don't know Frank how that didn't pick. Open space is a very important part of this park, and one of the big concerns that we mentioned, the very biggest concern was open space for vendors to stage. These areas for vendors staging areas. And there's sufficient enough space there to accommodate all the vendors that we would normally have in this park. This, this open space area can sit stage so that continued access to movies on the wall in part can happen. And so that was the basic area of element for open space and vendors accommodations in the park. Many of these that were proposed included more benches in the park. Writing, pedestrian writing fixtures throughout the park. There's the free library up here. There's the you know, business organization sign being relocated over here. And those are other elements of the park. In terms of landscaping, basically all the big trees stay. Nothing's coming down. They're designed as parks so that the trees that are there, for the most part, with the exception of one that's located over this vicinity, can stay. These funny looking circles here represent trees that are there in the park that will remain, and they're all the ones that are there. We're not taking anything down, but in one very small tree. Landscaping is proposed to semi buffer the Walnut Street side from the retaining wall on the other side, still allowing for informal access for vendors to come through there and stage for events. Other elements are buffering the electric facility that's right here. Putting some buffering along the west side over here, where there's a parking lot adjacent property. We're putting a fence in here with buffering vegetation there. Some very low vegetation along the wall where they show movies on it, that'd be very low dehides. And basically which could be either some permanent landscaping with woodies and then supplemented with annuals that are put in by volunteer labor. Basically, that's the idea for the park. So if there's any questions, I'd like to answer.
Let's, let's run through some of the, very good. Let's run through a couple more of the slides and the perspectives if we can.
Yes, can we go through the perspectives? There's three perspectives down. Okay, there's three perspectives that the village asked us to perform or prepare. This, by the way, just so you know, is a common comparison between what's proposed and what's there now. That's the survey, the park as it exists. And let's go to the next one. This is a shot looking from the from the southeast corner of the park, from low, from Low Street and Walnut Street looking into the park pavilion, little children's play area, the wall where you show pictures on, the picnic tables. Another one. That is at the corner of Low and Thursday. This is, this is a schematic of a spring, not going to look like that because it's going to be designed by a sculptor. Couple of interpretive panels at that corner. The pavilion in the background, the circular area in the center of the park with the annual Christmas tree there. Period lighting will be, and benches will be exactly the same as you've used in other parks in downtown. So it'll be the same light fixture, same bench fixture and other things that you're using, so they complement what's happening before. And landscaping. Next. And this is a shot looking from Front Street into the park, flagpole in the foreground, Christmas tree in the background, the free library, the ceremony right there, the pavilion there, benches, and some landscaping. But those are our perspectives are basically what we're thinking.
Hey, any questions in the board?
What are the dimensions of the gazebo?
Twenty by twenty, basically.
I just want to sit with the board for now if I can. She's a board member or something else, if she thought.
So a couple of questions. The Christmas tree, I forget, I don't actually know where you guys, are you proposing a year-round Christmas tree or? Just, just show where it is. Okay.
Because right now it's something we screw in. We could have a real tree someday, but that's option.
Okay.
Because I know it's also where our installations and things go along.
Yeah.
It's a summer view with the Christmas.
Christmas in July.
And the other question we had was the, the back of the park that about Walnut Street, you had shown some trees, but it doesn't look like it's shown in your. Yeah, but that other one, the other one, that's looking from Walnut, I'm not sure. Do you actually have trees shown there? I'm just curious what that would look like roughly.
We've, we're showing some street trees along the back on Walnut Street and some ground level shrubs. So kind of buffer that view of the wall.
I guess.
If you would go back.
The tree that's like behind the gazebo, it doesn't exist there right now, I believe. So this is more sparse than July.
That's too far. Okay, so, so you didn't, you guys didn't decide to remove trees or keep trees down?
No, it's still the idea is to have a keeler tree there to soften the concrete wall and the chain of fence. But also like reasonably smaller trees because of the power lines that are directly above it, as well as wanting parking and access through the park.
No, it's helpful. No, 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 it's helpful. So that's just right. You guys are looking at, that's not final design for a fountain and stuff like that.
Yeah, it's just kind of the layout's really what we're working with.
Yeah, and the flagpole is just to show it on one, one screen, or is it the height proposed for the flagpole?
I think it's to show it on one.
Okay, all right, all right. That's all I've got for now.
Anybody else on the board?
I just, I want to thank you for working on this. It's been a long process and I feel like it's really coming together. And so we appreciate your contributions to this village and Caitlin's and the Park and Tree Board. That's a good working relationship. For that fountain, you anticipate, like, you don't anticipate benches and it looks like, is it stone around the fountain? Or I know it's all open and then go change.
We were actually thinking you're doing at the floor area of the round fountain area. If you go to the park now at the existing gazebo, you'll notice that there is some pavement on the entrance. There are old stones laying in the ground, and they actually spell out Wizwall Park if you look carefully at it. We were thinking of relocating those stones and those pavements to the corner so that they could be relocated and, and historically preserved. So that would be the character of that floor, that floor surface would be in there.
Gotcha, thank you. And then is he a twenty-foot round gazebo?
It's an octagonal gazebo. You could probably handle four to six picnic tables or a bunch of benches. And then if you had some kind of a performance going on in there, like a, somebody wanted to read a poem or play guitar or do something, it's slightly raised above grade. Not too much, maybe a foot, foot and a half, but be handicap accessible with a ramp on one side. And so it would be available for multi-use, it's the multi-purpose pavilion.
Yeah, that sounds great. I'm surprised you could fit that many picnic tables under twenty.
Um, the proposed gazebo, the floor in it, are you proposing cast concrete or pavers or?
Well, we don't know yet. I mean, the floor actually can be paved with concrete. It could be, could be similar in pavement to the walks. And so that's something that, this is a master plan at this moment, the detailed design and stuff could be delineated as the project proceeds.
And let me, let me kind of take that as a good segue about what's next, and I saw your email today, so let's, let's kind of flush it out. If we can, let's drop the share screen at this point. And we can refer to what's in front of them there if we're in the house doing it. So the thought here is that he's going to leave us with the full size and we will, with that measurement now, be able to get a outdoor bulletin board to lay out essentially with QR code as we, over the next week or so, finish the survey, which you began proposing, so good idea and appreciate it back, just didn't have a chance to respond to you today. Yeah, I heard.
I was like, no, I haven't emailed.
I still haven't seen it fully, so I brought my glasses just in case. No, it's, we'll, we'll go probably two to three weeks with responses from folks. We'll put it on the website, obviously, but it'll be good to have people actually in Wizwall Park in real time, getting to see it, getting to see, you know, what's there versus what is planned right in front of them, and we'll, you know, promote the heck out of the survey. Get, get it back to you for one more round in the Park and Tree Board, for one more round if any tweaks are necessary at that point. Then Jeff, where do we go from there from your perspective?
Well, when we get your comments back, we have a master plan summary report here, which is a draft, which you have, and it's been circulated through the village. We're expecting comments back on that so we can finalize that and upgrade it. At that point, we would print and publish and give you a final master plan report, which could be the document used for fundraising and other things like that. I guess the next step would be, how do you pay for this? So it would be their state and federal grants that would be able, available to come up with money. Some of them are fifty percent matching, some of them are seventy-five percent and twenty-five percent matching. There's a variety of funds, of grants, so I guess that the, the village would want to apply for these grants.
And you'll, you'll give some guidance on some of those, right?
And then there's ways of shaving costs, which we put into the report. Shaving costs, we work with this, every community needs to shave some costs. Shaving cost means, does your DPW, once the project gets on your way and gets started and there's things that have to be done, does the DPW do the demolition work that has to be done, which is fairly easy stuff? And that saves money. You don't have to pay a contractor who is, you know, working under prevailing wage rates to do that kind of work. So there's volunteer labor, there's donations, there's all kinds of things that can happen in a park. We have a park going under construction this Friday down in Tannersville. And one of the major elements in it was the demolition removal of all the stuff that was there. Significant amount of stuff that had to be taken away. Well, the village of Tannersville, DPW took all the stuff away already. Probably saved seventy-five hundred thousand dollars in that project. Because the village was able to, with their own forces, do the removals. Now the contractor comes in, starts building. And now that, I don't know where else to go with that, but we have, on that project, we've got, at this moment, I think, three state or federal grants that are being issued. And one for the major construction and two smaller ones for amenities. So you can keep building on the project. You don't have to build everything at once. Get the basic construction done, and on the Tannersville project, all of our amenities are in one other grant. Benches, fire pits, barbecue grills, picnic tables, things like that are all coming under a separate grant that come in after the major construction's been done. So there's ways of staging this and phasing it and doing stuff that we'll work with again.
Your stuff, the technical term for landscape architects?
Yeah, it's my turn.
Okay, just checking. So essentially, with the way we had laid it out when we met with Jeff, so I'd be public about it, is essentially taking care of any sewer work that needs to be done in calendar year 2024, later this year. We're looking at the option of keeping the clay, but getting rid of the stone, getting some manholes in place as well while we have the opportunity, and then aiming for reconstruction or renovation, or whatever you want to look at it as, sometime in early to mid 2025, and that gives us an opportunity to get some grants secured and, you know, look at the overall approach of funding. You will handhold us to a certain degree, though, through the first, the next part of the process as well.
Of course. One of the other things that are very things that you can build on is the landscaping. Being you can go and start a little bit light at the landscaping, but you can always add more as you go along. And as grants and money becomes available, that can be added. And also some of your things like perennials, or not perennials, pardon me, annuals. If you had a committee or a group of people in a city and a village that would, would plant annuals in the spring, you don't need to pay a contractor to do that. The DPW can do it, volunteers can do that. Nice showy part of the park, which would be changeable every year, but you know you have to plant those tulip bones or the mums or whatever as you go. So there's ways of working with a park that can make it exciting, pretty, and still keep the cost in check.
People that I've talked to seem happy with this approach, or one aspect of it that has been generating a little disagreement, and that's the new diagonal path. And how important is that? So the, the question is diagonal path, because some people use that to kind of, the park balanced against the issue of having more green space. And I'm just wondering, how strong was your impression that a lot of people you would use that path? And I don't know how long your observations were or just how.
It was quite strong.
Yeah.
Coming from the southeast corner to the northwest corner of the park was a major traffic pattern in our mind, and we noticed that from the center of the park to the northwest corner, that there's no walk there now. People were walking over the lawn and people were tromping, tromping over that area to go from that corner to the center of the park, get into the park. It was a pretty heavily trafficked pattern in my mind.
Is it a deal killer, though, to not put it in, in terms of what you would put grass wise, out of curiosity?
No, I mean, we were obviously working with, this is your park, not mine.
Because if you don't put it in, there'll be, there'll be treaded area, right?
Well, yeah, it's like a college campus. When I decided college campus, we typically don't put all the walks in. We wait for a year or two and find out where the dirt is, and then we put walks in, because the kids use it, yeah? So I guess that could be something where you could start to park, look and wait and see how the traffic patterns work. And then you say, okay, what were we right or what were we wrong? That could work that way too, yeah.
I did think you, I just didn't get a chance to respond. I, I appreciate, I think it would be great to see the draft survey when you guys were. That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
We have a good week, I think, to get that done.
Talk about it before then, then discuss it.
This Tuesday, next Tuesday. Gotcha. Thank you.
Can I say one thing in regard to the paths as well?
Yeah.
So it might not be clear if we already made a number of changes from the original draft that we saw based on mainly like what we understood about the park and what we deleted, as well as speaking with members of the VSPDA. And so there were a lot of changes observed that like, you know, if a lot of people had an opinion that like this would be a problem or this wouldn't quite fit, we narrowed some things down. There was some talk about that diagonal path, but to this point in the process, we've had more positive than negative feedback of that. And so I'm excited to get more feedback from the public about it. But up until now, that's, that's where we are with diagonal path and prevalent grass versus open green space.
And in the next phase, here of public comment and response, you won't hurt Jeff's feelings, you won't hurt Caitlin's feelings, you won't hurt my feelings if you have some issues. Yeah, they want to know if there is something that is really problematic in your view or what they've done right. You know, balance as always, and let them know what you like, what you don't like and everything else. So please do, when it's made available officially, go on the website and go into the park itself. do when it's made available officially, go on the website and go into the park itself if you want. And like, start to give us the feedback via a Google survey that will most likely be running very, very soon. Any final thoughts, Jeff?
No, I agree with you. This is, this is your park as it evolves and it, and it changes, it can change. And as the design evolves through the next phase of design, we might find that we might change something, definitely.
Thank you very much. Judy, we're going to, we're going to hold it to, basically there will be the public comment section coming up a little bit. Uh, so we'll go public hearing, then public comment probably in that order. So for now, thank you, Jeff. We appreciate your time and efforts on this.
If you could leave the papers on top of the boards, that'd be helpful.
Take them out here and away and then.
Sounds good. Caitlin, if you wanted to start first, we could do that.
I'm leaving, I, I think Caitlin wants to. Yeah, she wants to use it for the next meeting, maybe.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Frank. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, everybody. Uh, now, thank you for your patience if you came for tonight's public hearing. Let's do a few things here. Uh, first things first, uh, we read the notice, Village of Boston Spa, notice work, a budget workshops and tenant budget, I actually have the wrong one. Terry, you do have the right one, right? Apologies. Too many public notices for on here. This one is Village of Boston Spa, notice public hearing on the twenty twenty-five tentative budget. Notice is hereby given pursuant to section twenty, the municipal home rule law of the state of New York, that a public hearing will be held by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Boston Spa on April eighth, twenty twenty-four at seven oh one PM or thereabouts at the Boston Spa Public Library located at twenty-one Milton Avenue, Boston Spa, New York, relating to the Village of Boston Spa's fiscal year twenty twenty-five tentative budget during the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees on April tw- eighth, twenty twenty-four at seven oh one PM. The public is permitted to attend and provide comments at the above location pursuant to open meetings law one oh three. A copy of the tentative budget can be obtained at the village offices and on the village's website. Now briefly, I just want to go over, uh, for those that did not, uh, get to watch or attend the budget workshop, uh, the fact that the tenant budget you have seen did have some proposed changes to it. I just want to recap those uh, briefly here. There weren't that many and it's probably worth just getting these out there. It's so everyone knows we're tracking these as well. Uh, for trustee Bernadette, she uh, asked to add twenty-six hundred dollars for the arts CE line for committee on the arts projects uh, and added twenty-six hundred revenue to the real property tax interest and penalty, penalty line to offset that. She also proposed adding one thousand dollars for publicity CE for the BSBPA farmer's market expenses. And again, added a thousand dollars of revenue to the real property tax interest and penalty line to offset. She proposed adding three hundred dollars for community beautification CE for garden club additional donation, uh, which was already at seven hundred, that would take it to a thousand in total. And she proposed adding three hundred dollars again in revenue to uh, the real property tax interest and penalty line to offset. I uh, proposed the following changes, one of which I had to add, actually I wanted to put out there because of something we learned today. Uh, I propose adding an additional four point seven five percent in for one period of water revenue because of the proposed eight percent overall increase. Uh, three and a quarter percent being inflation, four and three quarters percent being attributed to the uh, tower renovations that we're discussing. And then adding the four point seven five percent water revenue to A not oh nine six two oh nine, which is our fund balance slash reserve account offset uh, scenario. So basically put in revenue, but then shove it away into a reserve. Uh, we'll be making that reserve hopefully in our next meeting. Uh, Carly is working on that for us. Uh, then adding an additional three percent in for one period of sewer revenue and doing a contingency line, G nineteen ninety oh four in the sewer budget to offset that additional revenue. Yeah, we had originally budgeted five percent of sewer revenue increase. It would be eight percent in total for one of the periods uh, next year if that's approved. Uh, adding to Officer Street's expected wages overtime in FICA to account for an error in his tenure pay. And adding an offset to that, to the revenue of interest and earnings, which was kind of low balled by us. But then on the flip side, reducing the amount budgeted in debt service to interest by fifteen hundred dollars to account for the drop in the USDA rate to three point five percent for Seventy-Eight Thompson Street. We just found out that happened on April first. So we saved a little bit of money uh, on each payment as a result of that for Seventy-Eight Thompson Street. And then reducing the amount budgeted in that line uh, with the revenue line interest and earnings by fifteen hundred dollars. So basically it's almost a wash in interest and earnings, but not quite. Trustee Baskin and trustee Raymond included in these, uh, we're all note here too. Uh, trustee Baskin asked to add one thousand dollars historian plus CE for five historic district signs. Uh, there's no offset that was specifically named during our workshop. Uh, adding an unspecified amount to the library. Uh, I will talk about that a little bit more in one second. Uh, along with trustee Raymond, and the next ones, uh, reducing celebration CE by unspecified amount for family fun day reduction, but no offset on the other side of that was named. Uh, reducing planning board zoning board PS lines by an unspecified amount to provide a two percent or two point five percent maximum raise. No offset was specifically named. And also adding trustee P to trustees PS line for two, uh, or two point five percent raise for the trustees, no offset again was specifically named. With respect to the library, I spoke with Lori AC today as Andy Manion, uh, who was their uh, chair is out of town and Mary had been asking me the same questions. So uh, what had generally been happening with the library's account is uh, Larry Welbright had promised, I believe, ten thousand dollars a year fund balance to be pushed over to the library because of the pending construction that's going to be going on. I think you all know about the uh, construction project coming up over the next couple of years or a few years that they've been getting a lot of grants and donations for. So we took a broader look at this point this year of what the next year will bring to the library. And we don't know is the answer in short. We think they have a good amount of money. We think they have a sales uh, grant coming that would cover the rest of the first phase, first part of the first phase that they're going to be doing, but we're not sure. And all along, the promise made by the board has been, we're there for you. We are your safety net, your backdrop, backstop, whatever you want to call it. But we are here for you because when we're taking money to give to them, it's coming out of the fund balance anyway. But I will report that over the last few years, the library's fund balance, the library funds fund balance went from minus twenty-three thousand to my projection for this year is around fifty thousand dollars once this year is over. So they have funding to protect themselves. They have us here in A funds general fund to protect them as well. So we're going to be talking more once they know how the Sal grant, their Sal's grant goes to see where we're going from there and making sure that they'll have what they need or how to handle cost overruns. Because, you know, it's two years later at this point from the start of some of the numbers they got, things change and all overrun runs may happen. So we're going to talk and make sure they've got what they need. It's not going to be a surprise if they do say, hey, we need something, but we're going to let them kind of work with us to get to that point in a cooperative fashion. And that was a good call. And Lori, I think, is joining us uh, via Zoom, she can, uh, you know, speak for herself with respect to comments, but I did want to give input on that because I got a couple of people asking about that since last week. Having said all that, it is your turn with five minutes each uh, maximum to speak about the tentative budget. Uh, and that is only the tentative budget at this point in time. We'll have public comment sessions for other issues on the agenda later on. So if you would like to speak, if you're on Zoom, now's a great time to raise your hand on Zoom while we begin to tend to folks in our audience here. Please raise your hand, I'll call on you and we'll ask you to go up there and speak into our microphone and we'll let this roll.
Frank, sorry, I just had a question about process.
Yeah.
Um, so all those things you mentioned, at some point, we're going to see them in writing. I thought maybe we'd see a draft and then we'd add to it. Um, I'm assuming we're not voting on the budget tonight because there are these amendments that we haven't seen. And that, um, so we're going to hear from the public, we're going to see these things in writing and then at the subsequent meeting we would
Well, whatever changes. Most, most likely we'll do a straw poll behind the scenes to see if we can come to a conclusion on some of these and.
Between meetings.
Yeah, and then obviously the next meeting, it's.
Not voting on the budget tonight.
No, we're not, because it's not on the agenda purposely for that. Okay. Who wants to go first? Well, that's uh, I'm sorry for close.
I don't want to go first, but I will. This on?
Yes, it is.
Liz Cormos eighty-nine Hyde. Last week's assessment of the tentative budget prompted the mayor to address publicly numerous inquiries at the budget workshop. Despite the mayor's responses, I still have some reservations and questions. There are projects scheduled for fiscal year twenty-four totaling approximately three hundred thousand dollars that won't be spent this year. But will we roll over to fiscal year twenty-five? Actually municipal budgeting doesn't allow for you to roll over as a process. Each item funded in twenty-four should be reassessed for twenty-five, especially expenses for operations, and they should never be automatically over rolled over into a municipal budget. Specifically in celebrations, uh, thirty-seven thousand six forty is planned to be rolled over from this year. Um, there's an additional about five thousand dollars in expenses for new events um, and cost increases for family done fun day. But there's also some savings for decorations from what I could tell. So a reasonable amount would be around forty thousand for the uh, for celebrations, which includes some inflation. The budget amount of forty-six thousand one forty exceeds this and has the village shouldering a hundred percent of the costs despite significant past and anticipated future contributions um, for these events. Repairs to our infrastructure are a number one priority, but you'd not know it looking at this budget. Debt service from potential loans in, in fiscal year twenty-five, like the police building, water towers, DPW equipment and potentially DPW new building or rebuilding and court buildings are omitted. A responsible budget would estimate these expected debt service payments. And the fund balance should not serve as a resource when expenses can be estimated. This budget inflates some numbers and omits others. For example, in the fire department, the equipment line is intentionally inflated, which masks the intended surplus for future equipment purchases. Budget should actually accurately reflect the anticipated expenditures with any surpluses shown.
List this one.
Oh, shown uh, as a being allocated to a reserve account rather than being integrated into expense lines. Likewise, the budget should include the full Woods Hollow revenue of four hundred and thirty-five thousand and the payment of seventy-five thousand dollars to UMAC, the lobby company that did no more than just mark trees. Union Firehouse apron project has forty-four thousand being rolled over from this year. The project cost in, in next year is now estimated at a hundred and thirty. Okay, sorry. Um, is now a hundred and thirty-two thousand. This project is nonessential as the sidewalk is in better condition than many of our village sidewalks. According to the fire department, the current condition does not impede fire department operations. They can get in and out. The project's cost should be reassessed and potentially delayed another year. The mayor plans to withdraw over five hundred thousand from fund balance in fiscal twenty-five, the largest amount in a decade. This move exceeds three hundred thousand from this year by an additional two hundred thousand. The mayor revealed that the tentative budget has a sixty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollar operating budget. Operating deficit. He apparently intends to cover the deficit by using the fund balance. The Comptroller's Office warns against using fund balance to find finance operating deficits and underscores the importance of balancing the, the fiscal year twenty-five budget by either reducing expenditures or raising taxes accordingly. In terms of trustee pays trustees currently or earn four thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars a year. Milton pays their council people, twelve thousand, approximately twelve thousand five hundred, Boston, eleven thousand seven hundred. And Scotia pays their um, trustees seven thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars. A small two point five percent cost of living increase that is approximately four hundred and fifty dollars in total. It's still well under our names for pay for trustees. Our planning and zoning chairs convened only seven times in the past year and received sixteen um, one thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Chairs in Milton, Boston and Scotia receive from twelve hundred to fifteen hundred dollars. The proposed increase to twenty-five hundred dollars.
That's five minutes, Liz?
It appears excessive and is particularly when compared to other municipalities. If I may, I'd like to ask just one question.
No, we will not do Q and A on this, so thank you.
No, it's just, I'd just like to.
Liz, thank you.
Why sewer revenues?
Thank you. Trying to be fair here and to make sure that we get everybody that does want to speak. Cause I have a funny feeling we're just going to flow from here. So who else wants to go in the house? Ray, go ahead. And we start the clock after you identify your uh, address. So just fairness, watch yourself on that wire there, Ray, don't want you to trip.
Braylon sixteen Milbrook Avenue. Um, one thing that was mentioned during the meeting, I apologize for not being able to attend that last week, but I did watch it back. Um, one thing that was mentioned was that the board should be included in all planning done by the uh, task force. And that's what I'm going to address tonight. Thereby exerting their control over the program such as they do with all the committees, or do they? Do they exert control of the planning board, park and tree arts, et cetera, or do they listen as liaisons and report the final plans to the public? Our liaison attends our meetings and reports as needed to the rest of the board. When numerous ideas are discussed and nothing is finalized, it wouldn't make sense for any of these groups to report, well, we might do this or we might do that. As plans firm up, plans are released. If the board feels that they don't have enough say, take a more active part in the events. I would suggest that the board actually discuss with the citizens they represent what they want. I would suggest that they ask hundreds of participants of the events whether or not they think they are worthwhile or not. If they are worried about the financial end, review the books. They're in the village office. Everything is above board and transparent. Stop making this a political battle and not let it become the pure all that, uh, subject that it has. Um, as far as the raises though, uh, I worked in private industry forever. And you never got a raise just because you were in your position and did your job. You had to do something extraordinary. You had to commit more than anybody else to get a raise. It wasn't just, this is not a union job. This is a managerial position that you guys are in. Simple as that. Managers do not get raises because they're a manager. They get raises based on their performance and what they do. Um, it's that simple. If there is a problem with two and a half percent, I don't care about the dollars, it's a hundred and twelve bucks in pairs. It's not about that. It's about performance. And if the performance is above board and you can show the citizens what it is that you accomplished over the last year, you, not the board, you, then you get a raise. If not, oh well, you know, it, it happens. You know what it is going in. Um, there will be more on the uh, task force upcoming, so. And we do have a program. I think you're going to be excited.
Good dear, thank you. We have two people on Zoom, so if we want to start scattering that into this, go ahead.
All right.
Sure. Charlene should be able to unmute yourself and go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Sure can.
All right, before I get started, I do apologize. I have the flu, so if I cough, I'll mute. Um, Charlene Dubuque, six Calene Drive. Um, first, the good, right? No matter why you might be here tonight, just look at how many people turned up for tonight's meeting. It really shows that we're a community that cares and it speaks to the impact that our community has. Not only do people want to live here, but they visit because our village really is an amazing place. Now the bad. I heard some disturbing things on the budget playback and saw some pretty negative things being posted on Facebook by Ben Baskins, AKA Walters and his cronies. These comments are disgusting as they have implied that the events task force is misusing funds and that our group has. These comments are disgusting as they have implied that the events task force is misusing funds and that our group has bad intentions for this village. In reality, though, the opposite is true. Our task force dedicates our own free time to ensure that our community is being served. And heck, we even act like teachers sometimes, kind of using our own supplies to help out. If some of these trustees would have been at the egg stuffing event, they would have seen that. Ironically, though, Ben and friends, what you accuse us of doing politicizing village events is exactly what you have done. Our task force doesn't care about red or blue, we see community. It's just sad, though, that you have allowed your own spiteful jealousy for the progress made by village leadership. And you've allowed it to cloud your own judgment here. And also, I'm going to kind of say what everyone else has been thinking. What is your creepy obsession with the mayor's sister? How about showing her some respect? She has a name and it's Gina. Now, I don't want to get others discouraged by all this nonsense, though, because at the end of the day, strong communities are always stronger when its members are involved. And that's why we need so many of you. Now, we don't care about political affiliation or anything else for that matter. We're grateful for each and every volunteer who helps out with these events. So if any of you watching, if you want to get started, reach out to one of us. We are a great group and we have a lot of fun together. So I thank the reasonable members of our board for their continued support in this budget of the events task force. And the events that we help organize for the village and the greater Boston Spa community. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Want to stay on Zoom? Keegan? Go ahead, unmute and you are on, Keegan.
Good evening, Keegan Pasalic, twenty five East High Street. I would just like to express my support for the events that the task force puts on for our community. I believe that they are a vital part of our community that brings families together. They are something that our community families look forward to, they enjoy, and I just think that they are very important. And I want to say thank you for the event task force hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. And we can sweep out what's on Zoom right now, go ahead.
Keith Lewis.
And Keith, unmute and go ahead.
Keith Lewis, thirty eight East High Street, Boston Spa, New York. Continuing on, I think, in talking about the trustee pay. So the way I understand it in the budget, you're refusing to even put in a cost of living increase. And it it appears that everyone around us, twelve thousand five hundred in Milton, eleven thousand seven hundred in Boston. Scotia even is almost twice as much and it's a village. And we're paying the largest into planning and zoning over those adjacent to us. And one of the problems I have with this compensation structure is I don't think that you necessarily are able to to bring in the best and the brightest. Because you're asking them to give up a lot. You're asking them to give up their free time with their family to go into this political nightmare. Where you're back and forth and you're accused of things. And I think it's it's a little bit insane. And what we do attract is people kind of like Frank Rossi, who, you know, for all the goods you've done, Frank. You still don't necessarily enforce the code uniformly. And we have the situation where you're not enforcing it against your family on the water. And that costs us a great deal of money. And if we if we are encouraging trustees and mayors to get involved, who are performing in their job. And giving this impression that everything looks great, but yet behind the scenes are profiting from it. Or creating ad hoc committees where we are giving, you know, two hundred dollars per household. Or we've got a budget in an ad hoc committee that is operating outside the ethics law. And outside any of the rules that every other organization that has has the rights. It seems to me that we're creating a a really problematic situation where democracy is not going to survive. So I I think that's a little bit insane and I think it should be reconsidered. I also think that you know, we've got to, we've got to ask, why did the sewer revenue decrease in twenty four? Because the sewer rates were raised by three percent. So, you know, what happened? I'm not understanding that. That's a big question for me and a big red flag. And it's it's creating some issues. And then I want to kind of go back to this idea on the events committee. Because I think it's important for us to remember that it is two hundred dollars per household that this committee is overseeing. And I think it it is not unreasonable to say this is about, you know, chasing after your sister is, to me, a little bit like, I don't think we would be giving it to anyone but your sister. If it is not operating under the same rules. And I think it does look political because we're seeing Mary back it, we're seeing Bernadette back it, we're seeing Frank back it. And we're seeing two hundred dollars per household. And those events don't necessarily draw just from every household in Boston Spa, draws from outside of Boston Spa. And so I think it's important for us to to, if you're going to give them the money, then make them an official committee. And have them operate like everybody else. If they're going to have that kind of a budget, you know, do it. And as far as the art projects, give it, you've got a committee that does art. Banners and whist wall, that the 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 things that you're moving over into their column, it should go to the arts. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the compliment. You did say do some good things, I'll take that away from that and just call it a day. Anybody else in the room? Yes, I hide you, Lori, behind you. Yeah, sorry, that's you, yeah.
Hannah Stangle, thirty two Kent Street. I didn't ask for a raise, so you're giving me one thanks, but I didn't ask for it. I don't do anything for this village for the money, nothing. And any of you that are sitting up there asking for a raise should be ashamed of yourselves. I highly doubt that you put a lot more hours in than all these people that volunteered for the village. Secondly. Oh, the Easter egg hunt. I was working the food table that day. You have no idea how many people came through that line and thanked us for what we were doing. The, I don't care whether they're from Boston Spa or the town of Milton or the town of Galway or East Palm. They were there because their kids wanted to come and have a fun, free event. That is what it is all about, is doing for your community. If any, all of you people on Zoom and at this table and in the audience, if there are any of you, would spend half as much time coming and helping with these events as you are about complaining about these events, maybe we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to spend so much of our time. Do you realize that on Family Fun Day, we're down there for fourteen hours straight working? Me, Gina, Ray. We're we're down there for fourteen hours working, where the hell are the rest of you? You helped for what, a couple hours?
I was there all day.
You, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, come on, guys, really? Nobody's after this for the money, nobody's doing this for political reasons, we're doing this because we are a community. When my kids were little, my family didn't have a lot of money. I couldn't take my kids to the fair and spend a hundred dollars. My kids came to Family Fun Day, they came to the sledding, they came to the Falling Leaves Festival. That's what it's all about, giving back to our community. It's not about a two and a half percent raise, for God's sakes, grow up.
Yeah. Lori, you were next.
Lori O'Connor, one ninety nine Milton. Um, I'm on the committee. And as soon as I became part of this community.
This way, Laura. Thank you.
As soon as I became part of this committee, this community, I was all up in everyone's business. How can I help? What can I do to help this community? Because I came from a bigger community that I tried to help. And I I loved helping and my child was grown. So I came to another community that I fell in love with. And I was adopted by all of you. And I've never felt so loved and so hated, all at the same time. Because of who I associated with. And all I wanted to do was help. Being part of the events committee, I spend countless hours helping plan, we come up with contingency plans. My husband and I, we donate our resources, our own money, our own supplies. It's just coming up with plans and plans and plans, working on the best deals. I went to seven different Walmarts to get school supplies, seven. Going from one to another, oh, here I'm, oh, there's a limit on those, okay, I'll go to the next one. Those are countless hours. Family Fun Day from set up at, I think it was like six forty five. Showed up with coffee for everyone and left after breakdown. And it's, and then to get criticized. Just for everything, like what, all of our planning meetings were, what happens if it rains? What do we do if this happens? What happens if this doesn't show up? You know, it's just what happens if we lose power? Do we have enough gas for the generator? You know, it just, and when when, when you're part of a community and you're trying to do good and people nitpick at you and try to criticize you. And you you start to doubt yourself. Is it worth it? And then you look at the smiling faces of the kids. Or is the parents that don't have anything? Or even the children of the parents that do have? We have some wealthy people around here. But how much time do they spend with their children? Some of the children at Family Fun Day come from money. But they're there by themselves. Or they're there with their friends. Because their parents are aware of it. So it's not just low income people, it's just everyone. And that's why we do it. That's why I do it. That's why everyone I know that helps out. All the volunteers, that's why they do it. Now, as for the raises, I worked for the state during the day, I know how much I get paid. I knew how much I was getting paid when I took the job. All you guys, when you ran for office, you know what the job paid? The zoning, planning, whatever, they didn't ask for raises. You guys shouldn't be asking for raises, you knew how much it paid when you ran for office. I get raises because it's in a contract that some union negotiated, but I knew how much you got. When I took the job, how much it paid. Did I make more on the outside? Hell, yeah. It is what it is and do you guys deserve it? Ask yourselves, do you really deserve it? You knew how much it paid and ran for office. Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. Reminder to those on Zoom, again, if you do want to speak, if that was a good time to raise your hand again, if there's anybody left out there. Sub off that there, no, Jason, sorry.
Hi, good evening, Jason Dirkler, ninety nine Rowland Street. I just wanted to speak a bit about the events task force. They're a very vital part of this community. I, as a committee member for the Cub Scouts, have one, Boston Spa, participated in the Birdhouse Festival last year. It's a great success for our event. I mean, for our organization, we recruited a number of new scouts to join. It's not all about it's not all about who comes, who participates in the event or how much of the community it serves on the enjoyment side of things. You have to also look at the fact that you're bringing organizations together that are feeding off each other and benefiting from each other. You have the Lions Club, you have the Scouts, you have the brewery, you have all all these organizations, Business Professional Association, everybody benefits from this, from these types of events. The plan, the amount of planning and work that goes into them, it's just, it's unbelievable. Even just for us as a vendor at a single event, there was a lot of coordinating with families, making sure that you know, every hour was covered by different scouts to get their, to earn their merits for their badges and for their their advancements. So it it's not just about the kids coming, there's there's a whole web of things that are involved to to make it a a success for everyone. With that, I'd just like to say that there's a phrase, it's, uh, don't ever speak bad about the farmer when you mouth this fool. All right? So want to complain about these events? Maybe show up and, you know, work them, walk around, be seen, be present. Participate, participate in some of the organization. You know, volunteer, it's a volunteer. We all volunteer, we're not asking for raises first for, you know, personal gain. If you want to raise, let's see, let's see your faces, be present. Thank you.
Bales in the audience. Jared, go ahead.
Jeremy Gucci, twenty four Chapman Street. I just have a few questions and concerns about the budget. First, regarding the cost of living pay raises. I'm glad to see our village staff and employees are receiving a pay bump. Inflation is tough. However, I am disappointed to see that once again, we appear to be playing politics with a selective pay bump for members of planning and zoning boards, but not for the Board of Trustees. Two comments that were made in the workshop that doubt to me. First, it was suggested that we should increase the pay for zoning and planning board members because that is how we ensure they stay active. Many residents on other boards and committees, as we've heard tonight, volunteer their time, do homework and show up for their duties without that incentive. Regardless, if that incentive is needed for those boards, surely we want to be consistent and encourage more residents to run for elected office by further incentivizing the Board of Trustees as well. Second, the reason I heard provided by both Mayor Rossi and Trustee Van Dance for not raising the board salaries was that they don't deserve it. Cost of living raises are raises to help offset the effects of inflation and performance should have little to no bearing. In my experience, both private and public organizations separate cost of living raises and merit raises. If this is actually a merit raise being discussed, I'm curious if we can get clarification how this negative performance was determined. Particularly since in the summary, the mayor states that, quote, we are doing a great job. Are there objective performance metrics that you've used? Maybe a formal performance review for each trustee? If not, this is once again, politics and not good governance. I'm glad to see that the budget plans for water and sewer fee increases in anticipation of infrastructure needs. I am a little curious, as the previous commenter mentioned, looking at the data from twenty twenty three, twenty four to twenty twenty four, twenty five. We seem to have a decreased revenue for sewer rents and just curious why that is the case. I want to thank the Revenue Advisory Committee for working diligently on a plan for these rate increases and by closely examining all of our usage data. On celebrations for the current fiscal year, the village is projected to spend twenty eight thousand out of thirty one thousand dollars appropriated. The mayor's tentative budget seeks to appropriate forty six thousand for next year. That's almost fifty percent increase over the current year's appropriation, despite the fact that not all of those funds were used. But differently, celebrations in the current year will cost the village ten percent less than what was budgeted. And the mayor is asking to increase the budgeted amount by nearly fifty percent for next year. Now, speaking for myself, I enjoy attending the events and volunteering in events whenever I'm able to as the father of three young children. I don't know of any board member who's wanting to cut all of the budget for our events. But there are choices that we need to make. And in order to provide for this increase, the mayor plans to draw down on our fund balance. In other words, this budget makes the choice to appropriate money from the fund balance for one-time celebrations. Rather than preserve those funds for anticipated major expenses. This decision is short-sighted and will put more burden on residents in the future when necessary infrastructure spending comes due. In general, it strikes me as disingenuous to read in the mayor's summary. That, quote, "We will see much more spending and debt load over the next few years to address major issues." Making it crucial that we manage finances in a cautious manner and ensure our fund balance is fortified," unquote. He says this while also using over half a million dollars from the fund balance this coming year, more than any recent year. Lastly, regarding sidewalks. It's ironic that the mayor has determined it's acceptable to use the fund balance for sidewalks now. Considering his misleading statements last election day about a proposal, a proposal from Trustee Baskin to use the fund balance for sidewalks then. At that time, the mayor misrepresented the proposal as a tax increase. I suppose it is okay now to draw down the fund balance on the same issue when there's no election. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Anybody else? See a handle back there?
Say my name.
What was your name one more time? I cut you off.
Autumn Wright.
Thank you.
Um, as a business owner, I've had a business here in Boston Spa for ten years now. Um, and I find that the family fun stuff is what draws the community together in a world where our kids are home in front of TVs and tablets. And, um, people are, ever since COVID, less likely to be closer to one another. I think we're, we've lost a sense of community over the last few years and the world in general. So I think that, um, I know through people like Gina and Jason, um, they've, they shine a light, a lot of light on. Things that are very important to us as community members and what we need to focus on and come together for. So, um, also having a lot of new people come into town as clients of mine. A lot, and overhearing conversations while sitting in restaurants, a lot of people say that this is so much nicer than Saratoga because it's such a more, um, community vibe. They see the birdhouses, they want to know what that's about, um, things like that. It's just very, I grew up here, uh, twenty-seven years ago doing these things. My son does it now. So I think that it's super important. I'm not as involved, but need to be more increasingly involved with helping Gina, um, with this stuff. Because it is truly what brings a smile and a, me very feel to draw people and then bring community together in a world that's separating. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Hi, my name's Kelly Taylor. I live at one-twenty-one Fairground Avenue, Boston Spa. I'm here tonight because I was actually home watching Zoom. I had worked on my, and just sat back and relax. I'm not a very good public speaker, so excuse me for being a little nervous up here. Um, one of the things that I want to say is, first of all, I'm going to give Anna Stankel a big plus.
Kelly, just face this way.
I'm sorry.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm going to give Anna Stankel a big plus. That's what brought me to this meeting tonight, listening to what she had to say and telling it like it is. I'm a very much tell it like it is person also. Um, I feel what she said is the truth. She speaks from her heart. She's talking about. The raises and you knew this job when you came into it. You know what you're getting yourself into. The lady that spoke after her that works for the state. She was mentioning something about contracts and benefits. Um, I've been at county for thirty years and recently just retired. I lost my insurance at the county because I had to step away and come back when the closing of Maplewood. So that puts a lot on me too. To see everybody ask for other money. That shouldn't be allowed. You know what you're getting into. You know, these guys are working their butts off to do things for the village, the kids, the kids appreciate it. One of my jobs at the county was, I was a solicitor for Maplewood Manor. I go around to the area of businesses and I'd ask for donations. The businesses are willing to donate. People are willing to help here. You just got to open your mouth and step up. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room?
I have a cold, so I was not going to talk. Donna Darderas, sixty-four, Middle Street.
Feel better, okay?
I will. Um. I'm a member of the task force and I would really like to know what the objection is to what we do. Um, we work hard. The only payment we get is the gratitude of the children. I have hanging right now on my refrigerator. A coloring, if you can call it that, it's a purple crayon that was scribbled over an Easter bunny. And was given to me by a little girl at the Easter egg hunt. And she wanted me to have it and I said, honey, I'll take it home and hang it on my refrigerator. That's where it is. That's the only thing I've ever gotten personally, other than tremendous satisfaction. Out of working on the task force. I've written a lot of checks to it. Because one of the things I can donate, I'm an old lady, I can't do a lot of things, but I can write checks and donate and I do that. And I work breakfast with Santa because I love that. I can sit on my backside and take the tickets in. I think it's money well spent when we have happy, healthy children. That in comment can come out and enjoy and grow up with good memories of their village and where they lived when they were little. And I hope that we can continue that in the future. And that a lot more people will get involved in donating and as either with their labor. Or with their money to putting out events like this for the village. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually happy to hear you did hear your fridge because I saw when she gave it to you and it's awesome. Yes, Ellie. Let's, we've been, we've been very good tonight all together, so let's kind of keep the murmuring comments to ourselves right now. We'll make it through this without any kind of, uh, major drama.
Is this on?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to say this real slow. No one wants to defund anything. No one. And Facebook narrative has been ridiculous. Trustee Baskin is doing his job as a manager of our village finances. That's his job. If the task force became a village committee, which is just a transition. The committee will have checks and balances that such a large sum of money really needs. That's it.
And see, uh, one on Zoom also, let me just. Yeah, might as well. Okay. Paul, I, I haven't forgotten. I'm reading a poem soon, but go ahead.
Excellent. Hey, uh, good evening, guys. Um, hey, I want to appreciate your work. Um. I, I like doing this. Um, eighty-nine Grove Street, by the way. Um, I couldn't agree with the last two women who spoke, Donna and Kelly. Um, I think they both made excellent points. Uh, I chose to raise my family in Boston Spa. I was active duty Navy for twenty years and left them here and went off and served. Because this is such a terrific village, um, and we do a lot of awesome things in the village for families. Um, and my kids, uh, I mean, my daughter lives over on Brookline now. She's nineteen and finally out of the house. Um.
Congratulations.
Um, that being said, the beginning of this meeting tonight, we talked a lot about Wiswell Park. And, uh, the renovations we're going to do and spending a lot of village money, a lot of taxpayer money on making the village better for everyone. And I, I don't know why we're so against being transparent with this task force. And we're spending a lot of village money on terrific things that, that I absolutely agree with. But I, I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding why we're, why we are not keeping our spending habits above board. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else on Zoom? This would be the perfect time to raise your hand if you, if we're kind of in a last call mode, I think, because we're getting slower hands raised in the, uh, room. I did see a hand in the back. Is that Bob? Thank you.
I was not here for the, uh, tentative workshop. I was actually Zoom, watching it. And watching you guys bicker back and forth for twenty minutes by rates. Shouldn't have been a bicker back and forth for twenty minutes by rates. Bottom line, you guys knew what you're getting into and you guys took the job. You guys were elected. You knew. You didn't know you can go to see through New York, that work, you can find out. It's not hard. Anybody can do it. Um. As far as the events go. I've been going to these events since I can't remember when. Like, my parents took me, I've taken my kids. I hope I can take my grandson. But by you guys, or by them, whoever. Um. The money part comes from donations or wherever you guys get the money. I have no idea because I haven't really thought of that. Um, contributions, donations, the village. What if the contributions and donations stop? What's going to happen? You're not going to be able to afford, put these events on. So you had some funds you didn't, we didn't use last year, right? Okay, because the contributions and donations were able to cover that. What is wrong with having this money in case these contributions and donations can't cover it? It's when it goes back in a budget to spend somewhere else. Shouldn't be a problem. You're covering your tail, just like you're covering the tail of the library. You know, you should, you guys want to put these events on, that's where it should be. Everyone loves these events, whether you live in the village, they live in Galway, Boston, wherever they may live, they all enjoy these events. Because like many people have said here tonight, it brings the communities together, whether it's this community or, or surrounding communities. It brings us all together to enjoy something that another community couldn't put out. For whatever reason. One other thing I wanted to mention was the sidewalk in front of Union, Union Firehouse. Yes, I'm a member of Union Fire Company. You guys ever walked on a sidewalk? You ever driven the trucks on a sidewalk? It's waiting to fall apart. Why not hit it now before it falls apart? Like some of these sidewalks are in the village. So. That should be a priority because it's a village-owned sidewalk, it's a village-owned building. Therefore, the village is responsible for that sidewalk, not the homeowner. So in my eyes, the village has set an example of how they want the sidewalks for the village residents by doing their own sidewalks. And having their own sidewalks be a trophy sidewalk. This is what we expect of our residents. Instead of complaining about this or that about you replacing the sidewalk. Yes, it went up. The longer you guys wait to do it, the water, the more expensive it gets to be. Thank you.
Did see nobody else on Zoom. Anybody else in here? Yes, ma'am. Is that a Shen Shurri, no?
Yeah.
Come on.
That's where I'm employed. Excellent. Um, hi, I'm Karen Evanarius, uh, Tennessee's high, nine eleven church Ave and eighty-eight ninety-two Milton Ave. Um, we don't really get into politics. Um. Like, it's been a lot with politics that we've been watching lately. Um, but I just want to say, as a volunteer, as a teacher, always being volunteering and asking for stuff, like. I, I get that and I get the spending of your own money and doing a lot of being part of, uh, Boston Spa PTA, my own school's PTA. Um, and volunteering for a lot of events and doing a lot of things. It is a huge community builder and I believe that everyone on this board is in. Wants this community to do better from what I've seen with the people wanting the parks with the Wiswell Park. And the Family Fun Day and the different events that go on here, our business donates. I know, um, Gina has reached out to us before and we have donated to the Family Fun Day in the past. So we're very much in support of it. Um, and we also see where. The concern is, we don't want to pay, no one wants to pay more taxes, no one does, and that there's a concern about, um, pay increase. And if some people are getting pay increase and some people aren't, I can see where that would be a divisive thing, whether you work in a. Management position or a unionized position. Um, and I get it when I went into teaching, I knew what my pay was. I knew I wasn't going to be making a lot of money. Uh, and it was going to take me a long, long time to pay off my student loans. And I believe that none of you came into this job, this position, um, serving on the village. As, uh, something where you're going to be making a lot of money. And I appreciate the time that you guys all volunteered to be on this because you listen to all of us and you see all these things. I think, um, I appreciate your time and I think part of the problem that's happening in this village of friends. And we've been here for, my husband's been here for a very long time. And, um, I've been here for over twenty years. And I know it's a really positive, wonderful community that we really enjoy and I think it's part of the problem. And it's a problem with youth and it's a problem with adults is social media is, um. Taking the life out of all of us and is very divisive and very hurtful. And, um, it's upsetting because people are volunteering their time. And I will say, being a teacher and being volunteering and doing a lot of different things in your background and you're trying to get everything in. And you're trying to drop out all the I's and what ifs, what ifs, what ifs. And, um, there's always going to be people complaining and there's, you're never going to make everybody happy. Um, I know, serving on the Gordon Creek PTA, we've done different things and there's always people that are not happy. There's no way you can make everyone happy and it's unfortunate thing. And I think social media causes part of it and. It seems like it causes divisiveness here in these meetings. But I do want to say that I appreciate you guys all for everything you do because I know every single one of you did not get into. Being on this board and listening to all of us being happy or unhappy with you, um, for the little bit of money that you guys make. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Give you two the events. We do appreciate that very much. Anybody else on Zoom? I do see one.
Nathan Moore.
Go ahead, Nathan.
Hi, Nathan Ward, one Hyde Boulevard. I just have two things that I mentioned for, about the budget. Um, just from the little experience I have with working with government budgets, uh, I wouldn't use the word, uh, rollover. Usually in a government budget, if you don't use it, you lose it and, uh, they evaluate what you used. For the next year and that's what you are allocated. Um, so I would just maybe not use the word rollover. You could just say, I want to give extra money towards this certain thing and that's fine. Uh, the other, uh, point I want to mention is, uh, the raise for the board or the lack of raise for the board. Usually everyone gets a, uh, you know, cost of living raise, no matter what. And then on top of that, you were getting a merit raise based on how well you did. Now, I have heard, I did attend the workshop that occurred, uh, this past week. Uh, if you don't think you're doing a good job, then, uh, you know. Don't give yourself a merit raise, but you should, you should give yourself a cost of living wage. Also, um, if you're not doing it for the money, then give yourself zero. And then, uh, you can give that money to something else within the budget. Um, you know, doing, uh, the trustee is a part-time job. It should be paid part-time. Uh, you're very, you're limiting people that might want to be a trustee or a mayor. If you're paying them nothing because then they can't work their other job that they are earning the wages off of. So I, the mayor is a full-time job, so in my opinion, it should be paid full-time. There was someone who, uh, mentioned this a couple of months ago that the mayor salary should be a lot more than what it is. Because it is a full-time job and, you know, you're, you're, you're working your butt off doing, um, running a village. Um, so that's all I, all I have to say. Thanks.
Would you prefer the word be allocated? Would you prefer the word reallocate, Nathan, out of curiosity?
Rollover is what I heard.
Right. Would you prefer the word reallocate?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
And, you know, it's, we write those memos just out of, you know, candor here. It's, it's always a little tough to come up with the exact verb. It's just gonna get the most understanding at the end of the day. So that's why I went for the crude or rollover approach, but I appreciate. You know, in that word, in that way, the word probably is better off as reallocate. So thank you. Are we responding to people now? Not yet. I just wanted to.
Because we're not done with public comment yet. My turn.
I will remind the speaker that's about to come up that folks spoke very well on their behalf earlier on, so have fun, but I mean. Probably I don't even need to say anything right now.
I'd say something. Frank, you know me, come on.
No, I, I claim not to. Here we go.
Gina Marosi, Tenel Glory Lane, Boston Spa, member of the events task force. Representing things like Mohican Hill Apartments in the village. I have something written down, but before I do that. Does anybody really know how much the events task force has asked for? Because I've read numbers that are mind-boggling. Forty-six thousand, forty thousand. It amazes me that a past trustee and a current trustee. Can't read the budget and realize celebrations is now dedicated to the events committee. Not in its entirety. The budget that we asked for this year was worth thirty thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. Oh, look who arrived just in time. You might want to.
On the record, reflect, Officer Brain walked in the door.
That thirty thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. Would not equate two hundred dollars a home unless your home was worth over three million dollars. Three million dollars. Right now, a three hundred thousand dollar home at the amount we're asking for. It is just under nineteen dollars per fact, per home. I don't know where two hundred dollars is coming from, but this is where the seeds of doubt are tried to be planted against us. Now, as I said, a past trustee, well, now I'll read my. Here we are again. Once again, Ben, the task force has become your target. In your constant effort to hate all things Rossi. In a seven million dollar budget. The only concern you have is the thirty thousand dollars that the task force has asked for. This time, however, you've made several errors. First, you lied. You posted on Facebook that we are responsible for over forty-six thousand dollars of the budget. It's a lie. So I'm not sure if you can't read a budget, don't care to read a budget. Or merely regurgitating the incorrect numbers that Liz Coromos has put out there, but you lied. And that, sir, is a direct violation of your ethics code. But I'm spreading its truths, mis-truths, right, Ben? For the record. We are not responsible for that amount, as I just explained. It's divvied up amongst things like the Christmas parade, the Memorial Day parade, swimming under the stars. All events that we do not run. Next, you've attacked a good group of people who dedicate so much of their time to put on great events for the children of our community. Especially the underprivileged ones. These people and the children are merely collateral damage and you're attacked on the mayor and his sister. This needs to stop and it needs to stop now. Numerous times I have asked, what is it that we're doing wrong? The money that we ask for stays in the village coffers. The treasurer pays the bills when presented with them. Pays for the contracts when presented with them. You all make it sound like this board writes a check to Gina Marosi and she's going out boot shopping.
Yeah, just over one minute, just saying.
Thank you. So this needs to stop now. We never get an answer. We just get more abuse, more lies, more insults. Insults that we're not accountable and we're hiding what we do with the money. Insults like, you can do this event for less. And every year I tell you, you can do it better and you can do it for less. Have at it. Somebody brought up about doubting yourself. When you get attacked and attacked and attacked to doubt yourself. I want you to know, and I'm speaking to you, Ben, you could at least look at me. Thank you. I want you to know that I went to. The task force and I said, you know what, you guys, you're a target because of me. They're coming at you because of me, because of their hatred. I'm willing to walk away. I will walk away and take the pressure off you. And you know what they said? If I go, they go. And if they go, no events.
Thank you. Is Zoom's clear? Anybody in the room still to go? Chris.
Chris Buke, six Keeling Drive. Just want to point out again, this was just with the budget talks. I watched a whole budget talks and, you know, whether it was a five-minute mark where there was a discussion that. The village was insured, they could afford a hundred dollars for an art class. And then it gets past the hour and twenty mark where there's a discussion of increasing trustee pay. Again, you've heard a lot of passion tonight. You've heard a lot of good things, heard a lot of positivity. You've heard a lot of people upset, naturally so. You know, and again, I can't agree more with what you see on Facebook. I mean, if I just go to Facebook just a day ago and I could read, you know, it says right here for the second year in a row during the village budget workshop. Mayor's events task force is being used to spread misinformation, dividing both the board and village or friends community. I'll leave it at that. That was a group that just decided for whatever reason, throw something out there, maybe to draw attention and get everybody upset and riled and. Hear an attention to speak. But again, I've heard a few people in the crowd mumble and, you know, what, how's it, how's the event force under attack? Well, I mean, here's a good example how they're under attack right here on Facebook, a public platform. Then I heard a few people, you know, you heard somebody on Zoom. Say some pretty pointed things out of frustration, out of passion. And I heard people, who's that? Who's that? Well, that's my wife. I'll proudly say that's my wife because again, she spent time stuffing eggs, making her son walk home from his robotics. Because she was there for the other children of both Milton and the village of Boston Spa. She spent two hours, she gave up the teaching gig. She just spent four hours this past week and sick with the flu, doing stuff for both the town, Milton and for the village of Boston Spa. So you can actually understand why she's so upset when this nonsense is posted on Facebook. Again, I don't mind people having a problem. I don't have a problem with any trustee up here having a problem with any. Thing that goes on in the village. You are responsible for what goes on in the village and what money is spent. You can also step up and volunteer and I've seen many of you volunteer and I've seen many of you not volunteer, but you'd be the first one to lodge the most criticism about programs that benefit your village. Step up or step out. As far as raise goes, a legislator in New Hampshire makes a hundred dollars, a hundred dollars a year. And I've seen it kicked around back and forth. Why they shouldn't get an increase. That's been since eighteen ninety-nine because they put on persona that they are there for their community. They are there for the state. It is mostly volunteer work. Pay is secondary. It's what they give to their community. And I hear a lot of inspiration, well, we would have more people want to run for the trustee if the pay was there. How about you want to run it because you want to do it? Whether there's money involved or not, ask any school board member why they do it. Then we can pay it a cent. And as the past couple of years, a number of people show up in public comment and landbasing those members. Myself included, I've landbasted a few of them because I've been upset with decisions they make. That's what happens when you go into public service. Yet there's not one music event. I won't see a board member there. I know a board member that sits on committees for this village to help out and contributes all his time to the school. And has a family. And volunteers when we're cleaning up Wiswauk Park. Talk about shaving costs. It will be the Friends of Wiswauk, it'll be the Park and Tree Board, hopefully some of you, hopefully some of the people in the community that come to these meetings. I'd love to see him come up and clean out the park a little bit more too. And there are many who do. So for those of you in the crowd, you know who you are and thank you. So again, I hear a lot of grumble. I can understand people are passionate, people are upset. There's an easy solution to this. Volunteer, show up or come up here and provide solutions and be a part of that solution. There's many members in this crowd you don't even know, you haven't seen, but I've seen them. I've seen them come with us out to the village cemetery and clean up the gravestones of Civil War veterans. With no money. No incentive other than it was good of the community. We did it on Memorial Day. And we'll do it again. That's what it means to be in this village. That's why I'm proud of this village and that's why I'll never leave this village. But I would also like to listen to both sides and try to understand both sides. But again, a lot of nonsense does come up on Facebook. And I do hear a lot of passionate discussion. But the best way. Is to pay it forward, show up, stuff Easter eggs, show up with those kids when you're gluing googly eyes and noses on Easter buddies. And you're spending two hours of your day away from your own children and your own family to get back to someone else's family. Because they may have nothing better. Sorry, I got a little elevated, a little bit passionate myself. Thank you.
Donna Martin, twenty Chestwood Court. I, I do want to speak out in favor of the task force, but I want to point out that, like Jason said, it's not just about all the kids that come and enjoy. At their time there and the events, but it's also really a great opportunity. You see a lot of teenagers come and volunteer their time and that's our future. I know. Personally, Trustee Fandansa was a volunteer. She fed the homeless at City Mission and that's where her love for. Community service started, I believe. And I, and I think that. It's a great opportunity, like stuffing the eggs. I see teenagers there, high school kids, and they're all volunteering their time. So that's another crucial part of this. That's our future. All these people are volunteers, all these people care, but that's because maybe they got started when they were teenagers caring about this community. So that's just another aspect I want you to remember when you think about that. It's, there's different levels to how that benefits this community. And the other thing that they started was the menorah lighting and. I've been, it's been twice. I went every year. It's like, that's for our Jewish brothers and sisters who never get to celebrate publicly. We have Christmas tree lightings and the Christmas parade, but I'll tell you, these people show up and, and Christians show up. And, and our Jewish brothers and sisters show up and we're there together to celebrate their. Traditions. So just, those are some of the things I just wanted to point out. And I, I thank the task force. They're amazing, amazing.
Anything else? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing at eight forty-six PM? Trustee Fandansa. Trustee Price Bush, discussion. All in favor?
I'd like to say. I'd like to address some of them.
He didn't vote.
Didn't vote? Well, he said discussion, so.
Can we, yeah.
Well, can we discuss?
Closing a public hearing?
Just, just closing the hearing. That's, I'd like to respond to that as a tech directly.
This is not the time for.
Do it afterwards.
All in favor? Post, motion carries. Okay, now, now, I, hold on. First, I want to actually give all you a round of applause because this, for as contentious as it could get on Zoom or otherwise. Was the best public hearing we've had in my two years as mayor. I want to thank you for being respectful and doing it the right way here. So thank you, everybody. Template for the future of our public hearings and discussions. Ben, I would say that we get the village's business done here and come back at other business to any responses you want to do because we are getting late tonight right now. There's not much in front of the, so let's just get through this briefly, out of respect. There is another public comment session right now. There's not much on the agenda for agenda items only. You absolutely have something on the agenda you want to address. Go ahead, Liz Biddle. This is to three minutes.
Hello, Liz Biddle, one thirteen, you all know I'm the BSDPA secretary. So just wanted to thank you for putting the movies in the park on the agenda. And I wanted to make sure everybody knew the movies that we are doing. If you didn't come to our annual meeting, so. Our June movie is going to be Secretariat and that's going to be on the Belmont weekend. Then the July movie is going to be Barbie and then in August, we're doing a flashback Friday and that's going to be Honey, I Shrunk Kids.
Make sure Carly gets the invitation of Barbie.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we're dressing up, we're doing the whole thing. Yeah, it's gonna be awesome. So I'm just hoping everybody supports it. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thanks, Liz.
My pad up here. Liz Kromos, eighty-nine, Hyde. On the agenda is a motion eight is the secret negative declaration resolution related to Woods Hollow. Where does that contract stand and when will that be voted upon?
Thank you.
Okay, the village meeting minutes are on the agenda, but I want to bring to the attention that there was an accuracy in the meeting minutes. So I just want to reiterate that the historic district commission is sponsoring a workshop. On how to research your historic home, not restore your historic home. It is May ninth, seven PM, free admission, refreshments provided. It's being held at the community spa, excuse me, the community room at the Boston Spa Library. John Cromie is going to demonstrate how to research the age of your Boston Spa house. It's a hands-on workshop where he will show you how to use online historical and public resources. To research your historic home and its age. Along the way, get to know your house's history, those people who were part of the village community. Join us if you have an older home. You don't have to live in the historic district. Or if you love history, passionate about community char- character, it's sponsored by the Boston Spa Historic District Commission. Thank you.
You bring up something I neglected. Can I get a motion to the minutes of the March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting be approved? Trustee Fandansa, trustee price push discussion.
I have something to say.
Go ahead, Ben.
All right.
Thanks for.
I gotta just make a statement that I'll submit later rather than trying to negotiate changes with. Before it doesn't seem to want to easily make. My belief that there's extra unnecessary interpretation in the minutes concerning Sean and my intentions and feelings. While leaving out the main points of what we are actually saying. For instance, the minute state quote trustee Baskin admonished Clerk O'Connor for asking him. To stop raising his voice, saying it is not the position of the clerk to insert herself and before discussion and quote. The use of the word admonished is an unnecessary and loaded interpretation of what I explicitly said. I feel that the minute should just state what I said. The point I made and actually stated, which is essentially absent in these minutes, is that Sean and I feel that Democrats and Republicans are being treated differently, both in the minutes and in the prior meeting. Another example, quote. Trustee Baskin feels that the clerk's position should not be weaponized and it's a degradation to the position, end quote. Again, no context provided regarding differential treatment. What I actually said was, quote. I would hate to see the clerk's position weaponized, so to speak, to try to dampen down the voices of the Democrats on this board. I think that is inappropriate and a degradation of the position, unquote. The perception of differential political partisanship in the minutes needs to be included because it is the rationale for every statement we make. I also wish my reason for voting against the, the stop signs was included, which wasn't sure, but it makes intuitive sense. though it makes intuitive sense to put in stop signs, if the science indicates that something else should be done, we should lean in that direction. Thank you very much.
I'd like to, um, I sent something earlier to the board members today regarding the minutes. In particular, to the discussion of motion C, if people don't remember what motion C was, it's the installation of the always stop. Chapman and Hyde, um, there was large chunks of perfect pertinent information and facts that were given entirely left out of the minutes, that I feel are important to the argument, and I would like to have amended, submended to include them, I'm gonna read them right now. Statement one, there has been numerous studies at municipalities across the country that clearly shows stop signs do not reduce the speed of traffic.
Was, was this read in the minutes at the time, or read in the meeting? Was this a statement actually read in the meeting at the time?
This statement was read in the meeting, it was a reflection of what I said.
Well, that's not appropriate then during this motion. Okay, this is about the minutes of the meeting that occurred, and if it was a statement you had read off, it would be handed over most likely, or we would be able to.
These are excerpts from what I stated at that meeting.
Nothing, nothing usually is done verbatim for minutes, this is what I said at the last meeting.
But there's references to state and federal guidelines completely left out of the minutes.
I think it covers when you said you're an engineer. You, I think it constitutes, it says you're an engineer, and it to me that constitutes that you're providing your expertise, I don't think you need to have word for word, word for word, it's, it'll be ten pages long.
This is right.
You want it ten pages long? I'm saying, you open up floodgates for this, and we're gonna have ten page minutes, that, that, I, I don't, this is.
That sounds like a ridiculous argument.
There's YouTube available for everybody to go to if they want specifics.
Don't want these facts in the minutes?
Has nothing to do with that, it's about being summarized, minutes are summarizations.
Believe me, it could be a lot longer if I did it verbatim.
Now, I'm gonna call a timeout out of respect, because we're having cross talk. Carla, you and I have been discussing this recently, I know you're coming up with a guide for the board in general, because it's fallen off the rails to a certain degree. Would you like to give your general thirty thousand foot view on minutes, et cetera, to be supplemented by your memo forthcoming?
The word like is not really what I would say, but I'd like to give it, but, um. Um, I, I do, and I am putting this together, and I meant to do it, but obviously I was not here. Open Meetings Law one oh six is minutes are summarized, and they are owned by the clerk. Basically, they're the clerk's minutes, so the minutes are merely to be a summary of the people that were present, the motions that were made, and the votes that were made, that, that occurred. Um, your rules of procedure do require a little bit more, excuse me. Um, and they do require adoption, which is not allowed, not required in the law either, I don't know if a lot of people know that there's nothing in the law requiring this board to adopt minutes, it's, it's not in the law. It's, the only thing they have to do is Terry has to take the minutes, Terry has to post the minutes. That's it, this board chooses to adopt the minutes, as most boards do. The only people who can actually amend minutes are the trustees. Um, you know, unfortunately, although that's a very good one, and I think it'll be moved, like researched and restored. Um, the public can't ask for minutes to be amended. Uh, and with respect to the minutes, they are not to be verbatim, they are not to be transcribed. Um, and there's a lot of classes on this out there that NICOM gives out. Um, I, I've seen a lot over the past couple of years of board members saying, but I said this, and why is that in there? But I said this, and why isn't that in there? It doesn't have to be legally. Um, that's up to this board what they want to put in there, but legally, all their, all Terry needs to do is say, these people were here, this was the motion, this was the vote. So, um, with respect to, and Sean, I, I looked at your stuff earlier, and I think you had things in quotes.
Yeah.
Were they direct quotes from last meeting?
Okay, so I use that to isolate them, but since the minutes are summarized, I can summarize.
Well, no, 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 hang on, let me, to, to, my, my, the reason I was asking that is, um, you know, if it's a direct quote from the meeting that took place two weeks ago, um, you know, and you, you want that included, that's something you have included, but if you're summarizing today something you said two weeks ago, that's adding information that wasn't given two weeks ago. So, it's kind of like if I go to court and I bring in something that I didn't give to you guys beforehand, and I say, but they didn't look at this. It, you just, that, that's not acceptable, but if you want specific quotes, and that's what you're asking, um, to be put in, is specific quotes. That is, oh, that you can bring that up, I'm just trying to, and, and it's not really that, I'm not trying to make it semantics. It's just the minutes are a reflection of the meeting that occurred on the twenty-fifth, as the clerk took them down. So, that will be to these guys, that will be in a memo to everybody here, but there are classes from NICOM, and there are a lot of things out there. Division for Local Government Services from Department of State, I highly encourage you guys to look at that, because this takes up way too much time.
Can, can we include in your guidance, if you're willing and amenable, um, guidance that minute should stick to what was said versus interpretations of people's feelings, like someone was frustrated, or expressions of how things were said, can we just, is that a reasonable guideline?
I will put in there what the law says, I have actually done a little bit of research, um, over the past couple of weeks, because I did watch the meeting that Stephanie came to for me, and I thank her for that. Um, and I saw the back and forth and listened to it, and actually got frustrated myself watching you guys, but it, it's just, and, and I have said to the mayor, I'm like, well, you know, maybe we need to sanitize these more. But that's something that I can talk to Terry about as the owner of the minutes. Um, but I will put in the memo what is legally required, absolutely.
Well, combined with the rules of procedure, right, what we have.
Well, that's legally required for your, this board.
Right, okay, thank you.
So, I, I'm gonna take what you're asking for as a request for amendment, do you want me to pursue the request for amendment? Because we received your email today.
Right, well, in the light of this, since they're, I can't verify that they're direct quotes, and I'll, I'll withdraw the amendment.
Okay, thank you for that. All in favor, vote yes.
I'm gonna submit a statement, rather than spend time negotiating.
So it'll be part of the minutes for this week.
It'll be for the minutes for this meeting, though, it will not affect the minutes that you're talking about.
Right, I'm gonna vote against those minutes and then put a statement up here.
And then, so in two weeks, you'll be voting on that statement?
If I find them objectionable, I'll, um, voting, you know.
We'll be voting whether you find them objectionable or not, we'll vote.
Right, I will be voting.
Do you accept Maryland's minor change? Mary, do you accept Maryland's minor change? Okay, there we go, all in favor of the minutes as amended by that change? As tiebreaker, I vote aye, it is three to two by voice vote, and therefore, the motion carries that the minutes are approved. I cut off, uh, public comment, I apologize, I thank you, Maryland, for catching, uh, that I did this, skip over that unintentionally. Uh, anybody else, again, only on agenda items and not including minutes at this point, go ahead.
Jason Gerfer, ninety-nine, Rutherford Street, uh, I was thoroughly impressed with Mr. Anthony's presentation on the plans for the West Wall Park improvements. Um, Caitlin, very, very nice, um, I do agree that the, uh, the diagonal should continue. Um, if, if you look at the overhead, it's the first time I saw it, it was, it was breathtaking, just, well, a little OCD, maybe. It was symmetrical. But I think that it's, uh, you know, if, if you look at other corner lots, where there's public walking, public access, public they, they tread it down, and there's like a dirt goat path essentially through, through the grass, so if you're trying to improve the park, let's just stick with the complete diagonal, I think it looks great, so.
Thank you, I mean, I ask comments about the park, maybe wait till the second public comments, that's my fault, Jason, no, it's my fault actually in that one, but out of respect, I just want to get to, to the motions, so it kind of focuses on the motions, we do have another public comment yet to come, hey, I'm just, so. Um, anybody else with anything pending in front of us, I see a hand up there.
Yep, Kristen, I.
Okay, Kristen, go ahead.
Hello, Kristen Ekaluchi, twenty-four Chapman Street. Um, I am a little disappointed that I did not get a chance to comment on the budget. Um, I don't know if my hand was purposely ignored or not, but, um, I would like to speak to, um, some points that I would like to make regarding the budget, is that allowed, Mayor Rossi?
Go, go ahead, I, I, we had no hand up, and I announced that fact, and nobody objected to it, uh, because we often see the hand from here, so we apologize if that was somehow a glitch.
Okay, great, great to know I'm not being muted here, like I am being muted online, but, okay. Um, so I agree that, um, holding political office should be about public service and not about the salary. So I first want to talk about this salary increase that is being spun online as some major raise for our trustees. Um, it's a minor cost of living raise, it amounts to very little money compared to any other raise, um, across the board. Um, I think it's being politicized, I think if we're going to give cost of living raises to all village employees, which I think they deserve, I think they all do great work. Village governance work is valuable work, and it should be compensated, um, by increasing with the cost of living increases, this very minor increase. And I think all of the trustees also should get that exact same cost of living increase. The fact that it's being spun and used against certain trustees, um, for advocating for that is very alarming and disappointing and politicized against certain members, and I think that's wrong. Um, I also think that maybe unintentionally by grandstanding and saying we're not getting giving the leaders of our community a raise, a very small raise, a cost of living raise, um, that that in effect ices out future people that might need and depend on that very small stipend that is given to the leaders of our community in order to be able to run in the future. Um, I don't know if that was something that, uh, Mayor Rossi and trustee Van Dees, um, you know, thought of, but again, you know, it's great that you're able to not take a raise, it's great that your stipends for the work that you do. Um, you don't need it, that's great, but you're also denying that to future people that may not have the same financial and socioeconomic background that you do, that could and need that increase of living cost wage, so just something to consider, um, I think everyone deserves a raise that does village work, I thank all of you for doing that work. And I would, um, encourage you not to politicize a small cost of living wage increase against your fellow trustees. Um, you know, I also, is my time up, sir?
No, I'm just asking people to stop the murmuring in the background. Go ahead.
Great, um, so I also, when I tuned in, there's a lot of, um, volunteer shaming that's happening, uh, related to, uh, your mayor's events task force. Um, you know, I think everyone in the village agrees, and everyone, um, commends all of the hard work that the mayor's events task force does to put on Family Fun Day, to put on the Easter Icons. There's no question that we have a lot of dedicated volunteers in our community, and you put on a lot of work to make these events happen. I think we all appreciate that, and we all give you your accolades and flowers for that. I think it's just when we look at the budget, do we want to increase every single year more and more money to events, or is there another way that we can continue these events, um, without continuing to increase um, the amount that the village is spending on these, uh, events? Um, so I think that's the point of disagreement, I, it's disappointing to hear people say that that folks want to defund or disband the mayor's events task force, I, I don't think that's the case at all. It's, do we want to skill, still increase that funding year after year after year after year? Um, maybe the answer is yes, I mean, the majority of the board can vote for that, that's fine, I think being able to, like, uh, try to shame people to volunteer, and that we disagree that we're giving you more and more money is not the best way to get people to volunteer with your group. So I would just encourage, again, we think about our motto, a village of friends, we all want to help each other out, and is it really the tactic to shame other people to join your group is going to make everybody want to join your group, I, I don't know, so, um.
One minute, Kristen.
Okay, thank you, I just, um, again, want to thank everybody on the board for their hard work, I think you all deserve a raise. Thank you to the events task force, I also would love to see the events task force become a village official committee. That way, we all know, like, when you meet, who's involved, and how we can become involved. Um, I think there's a lot of great volunteers on official village committees, and I think the mayor's task force should also become an official village committee, thank you.
Thank you, we have another hand up on Zoom, uh, again, this should not become, uh, budget one-on-one time, because we already did that. So it's only on agenda items in the motions that are coming up here, uh, go ahead.
Keith Lewis, thirty-eight East Ty Street, Boston Spa, so I'm not completely, uh, certain of what all's being done on Woods Hollow, but it's one thing that I brought up a number of times, and I want to just remind again that the contract that was promote, uh, proposed by Lumac had a date of twelve twenty-four, and in the cover letter that they presented that contract, uh, in the paperwork that was in our minutes uh, shows that they mentioned the Milton sale as a possibility, but the contract, so that was twelve twenty-four. That was the contract that was voted on by the board, and was approved by the board, was a twelve twenty-four contract. And then the contract that was signed had an August twenty-three date, so it had, it had dropped down more than a year on the contract that was signed. Um, and that was done at the hands of our village council and the mayor, not the rest of the board. The rest of the board did not approve that. Um, and then in the conversation, in the sale of, of the property, it was argued, we need to sell this property because we're gonna have to pay seventy-five thousand dollars, and I, I will make sure that I give you the time on the meetings, I came across it when I watched it, it will cost seventy-five thousand dollars on the contract, because we cannot have it done now. Because they no longer have the time, they can't, they can't lumber the land before August. Well, number one, when a contract is canceled and, uh, somebody books another job, um, they shouldn't get full buy-in on the contract, so this seventy-five thousand figure shouldn't have been argued as something that we would do at that point, because if they booked somebody else during our time slot, during all of the time that was available, and they have made up the funds that they were gonna lose, um, that's number one, but number two, it wasn't approved by the board. So there, there is no reason that this contract needs to be, um, bought out. It wasn't a legitimate contract, and the funds that were agreed to from Milton include the total amount that Milton was willing to pay, and that is the amount the village should be receiving. Um, it should then negotiate what the contract buyout is gonna be, not this thing of seventy-five thousand dollars. I, I don't think that the property should have ever been sold when Milton got to value the property in the first place. We should have hired somebody, paid somebody, an outside, uh, person from the village, I don't care if they were great. I don't think you have the person buying your land, uh, do the appraisal. Um, but I want to remind that, because whatever's being voted on tonight, if seventy-five thousand dollar buyout is being done, uh, that is three hundred dollars per household, there are twenty-four hundred eighty-eight houses.
Time is up, Keith.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else, uh, for this public comment session? Seeing none.
You had somebody just popped up on.
Diana, go ahead. Go ahead, Diana, you can unmute. Or.
Alright, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can now, go ahead.
Good afternoon, the Yanis Boe, twenty-four B Street. Um, this message is in regard of the summer festival and the cause of man-hours and the barriers used to the, for this event. Um, as everyone know, we are preparing for our third year hosting the Summer Kika Festival. An event that provides complimentary entertainment for children and families, and promotes awareness of local businesses and nonprofit organizations, supporting the Boston Spa community. In the first years, and just so you know, um, we did not require barriers, as no street were closed. Last year, we closed Low Street partially, and my husband and I set up the barriers left by the DPW the day before at the road corner. After the event, we disassembled the barriers and returned them to their original position. So, the cause involved is. So the cause involved is microscopic. As the organizer, us, um, me and Natalia from Play Hollow and our family handle all the work for this event. So um, to be transparent and honest with you, we do no requests funds or rely on taxpayer money. So this is a community event that is being planned and executed by two minority women on. Um, so uh, I don't know if this answer your question, trustee Raymond. I hope this answer your question and it will be really appreciate if you are part of our um, event. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Okay, uh, at this point, I believe we are in a position to go to consent agenda. Obviously excluding number one, is there any uh, thing uh, two, three or four or five that the trustees would like to remove for separate consideration?
There's nothing I'd really like to remove or consider. This may be a quick discussion.
Well, then remove it.
Okay, then I'll remove um, five.
Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of number one and number five, with number one having been already approved, number five to be discussed? Trustee Fandesa, trustee Baskin, discussion. All in favor of the consent agenda? Opposed, motion carries. Separating motion now. Can I get a motion to approve the summer kickoff festival on Sunday, six twenty-three, twenty-four, rain date, six thirty, twenty-four from eight AM setup until four PM cleanup event from ten AM to two PM in Wizwall Park and proving the blockade proportion of Low Street near Front Street. Proof of insurance has been provided. Trustee Fandesa. Trustee Raymond, discussion.
The only discussion I have regarding this is, um, we've had a lot of talks regarding events applications and the inclusion of village services and providing a process associated with those village services. Um, in this particular case, uh, this festival needs the use of DPW man hours and I don't know if they give you equipment um, as well, but if they do, I have no issue with waiving that fee, but we should know what that fee is. That should just be public information as part of protocol for any of these events is how much of taxpayer dollars will be used for these events. I just think that's good government transparency.
And the person who is in charge of the event or half in charge of the event just told you it's a blockade dropped off on a Friday set up by them on a Saturday and it's, if it ever need to be put up, Jeff would do it himself and he's not overtime. So it has no.
So we wouldn't pay him, we'd do it for free.
We have no substantive effect.
So we wouldn't pay him, you would do it for free.
He's salaried, Sean.
Okay, so his, those additional hours don't count.
I think he's taken one comp day in his entire uh, time with me as mayor and he begged for it. It's like he had to beg for it because he already has comp time out the wazoo as it is, if he ever wanted to take it. So no, it doesn't have any kind of substantive uh, effect on budgeting and cost to the village. And that was just stated by Diana.
Okay, and then in this particular interest, there may be no cost associated. But as a rule, we should be developing the cost if there is a cost associated with it.
And when we see the checkbox of yes for DPW usage, we ask the question. This case, you asked me today, I told you exactly what Diana's just said, and we still pursued this because we have to make it a public spectacle.
Well, I think the public should be aware that they should have the habit.
The public shouldn't have to uh, watch more volunteers here putting together great events.
Opportunity to comment on, because it wasn't shown. It wasn't public information.
It says it on the application barricade only, on the application.
I think it would be easier just to put it in the motion for like the public, so that it would be easier to read.
There's such minimal impact and Diana's and Natalia were good. So why, why are you picking on this event?
What I'm saying in principle, because there will be other events.
They bring a lot of people downtown on a quiet Sunday to spend their money in our village.
This conversation is a valuable conversation to have. Nobody should be um, you know, denigrated for having the conversation.
Conversation was had an email earlier today, Ben. That's the problem.
Right, and he, he should have a discussion. I don't know what the aversion to public transparency is.
Again, it's been asked and answered. There's such minimal impact.
And we're having a discussion now, so.
Okay, asked and answered. It's been answered. There's minimal impact. They're just getting barricades and they set them up themselves.
You're saying there's no cost. I'm saying as a rule, we should probably put it in the motion.
Mayor, can you please call the vote? I mean, at this point.
I have, I have another comment. I have another comment. We're in the middle of a discussion. Here we go again.
Well.
I have another comment. We're in the discussion piece.
You are not a trustee, Ms. Cormos. You're not a trustee, Ms. Cormos. You are no longer on this board.
Liz, you'll have to stop speaking. We'll ask Officer Brink to support you out.
So, um, we're in the middle, we're, we're in the middle of discussion. I, I have, I just like to can our council please advise? Can, can the council please advise on rule of order, point of order here? Because it says in our rules of procedure that a discussion will not be interrupted once it's, once it's started. There's a trustee will not be interrupted.
A motion for all the questions made.
But we're still in discussion. And so for you to use motions to stop discussion.
Not be endless either.
I barely.
So in addition to my memo to everybody on open meetings law, I'm providing a memo on the rules of procedure and any of the other rules that, that this board generally doesn't follow. Many of you, and, and I'm sorry for saying that, but you know, I've sat here for three years now almost. And, and I think maybe it'll be helpful to everybody to have what the rules of procedure are. When a motion is called, yes, the discussion ends. And you know, how it's being used, that is not a legal question for me. Um, if the mayor wants to use it that way, whoever sits in the mayoral position uses it that way. But legally, when a motion is called, discussion ends. I'm not getting involved in the rest of it. Um, but you know, that wait, hang on please. Um, there, I will send a, an attorney client memo that stays to this board as an attorney client memo um, with respect to the rules of procedure and everything that, that has to occur at these meetings.
The question's been called.
Well, I'm just, just so I understand counsel, what the motion can be called as a tool to censor free speech?
Trustee Raymond, please don't put words in my mouth. Um, I'm saying nothing about free speech. I am merely advising that when a motion is called, discussion ends. That is, that is the way the procedure is. How it is used, why it is used, who uses it? The mayor, the mayor, the supervisor, the chief executive officer, they're the ones who use it. I am not saying it is a censorship or anything. I'm just merely advising that this is what the law is. And again, I will put this in a memo so everyone has it.
And there's the law and then there's how our board is run, which is the rules of procedure.
Can I get a roll call though, please?
And it says in the procedure that a board member should not be interrupted when speaking.
Trustee Fandesa? Trustee Price? Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Rossi?
Yes. You got, we'll assume that was a pass by trustee Baskin, give him one more opportunity.
We're voting on the motion itself?
Yes, the question was called. Yes, five zero. Okay, uh, with respect to seeker, we're, I, with your permission, based on time, we will put it with the contract discussion for next week. Is that okay for everybody? In, in two weeks, excuse me. Is that, except both, it can be done in that manner. So here's announcements. I'm gonna forego them. If there's anything pressing, uh, we'll get it up on the website, Facebook. Treasuries report is briefed and it is in uh, the attachments. Liaison reports will start with Sean. Sorry.
Make sure you're talking into the mic because it's sort of your, sort of between mics.
Cloud salt, snow event Thursday, four, four, repair catch basin. Uh, on Scott Street, the ACC sign inventory, uh, create a spreadsheet for that. Water training class for four people. Um, I assume that's not a swimming class. So, um, prep for contractor, the DPW building repair, which is now in pro- progress. And new police department station, retrofit of the Thomas Street building. And we, he's had a, a lot of people taking vacations and this week, so um, um, hasn't been able to get as much done as he could. So, um, the to-do list is repair a catch basin on South and Division Streets. Uh, repair uh, manhole on Meadow Lane. Stump removal at the library. Uh, patch paving with hot mix from winter water digs and breaks, hydro flow test. That's gonna be four, five. And then a open playground, Jelly Park is scheduled for the ninth. Unless we get another snowstorm.
Spike your tongue?
And patch paving at Dublin Drive. Um, due to a storm project there, uh, replace a meter. And continue to work on the new police department station. It assumes another two to three weeks. Um, San Souci building is on hold for now. Street seat painting is going to start this week. And cutting down, cut down, remove trees is gonna start hopefully this week as well as stump driving. Um, water meters and EPA water work and Hyde Boulevard stop signs. And I guess he said speed sign. I assume those are your speed is.
Yes. Uh, Sean, let's leave this now just so we do not lose track of it. Uh, this is an alternative uh, motion that was asked for by Jeff uh, in the Mercy Basin. Basically, gotta get a motion to uh, permit purchase of four hundred tons of Morton's salt. PO number two, four dash two, eight, nine for a total of twenty-four thousand, six hundred, sixty dollars, which is based off of Saratoga's county. It's Saratoga County's bid price.
I'll make that.
Trustee Raymond, trustee Fandesa, discussion. We do allow ninety seconds of public comment on this motion only. Any hands for that? Any hands on Zoom for that? Didn't think so. All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Just so you know, that still puts us under uh, budget by about one hundred to one hundred fifty tons according to Jeff. Okay, Mary, you're up.
The events task force has some announcement on their new project and I'm gonna let Ray Otten take over for that.
So this also is, it's not a big deal, but it's out of order. This is not a public comment time. But I guess the rules apply differently to different people. It's not your, you're a public, you're a member of the public and it's not your time to talk, but you are talking. So apparently that's, that's okay in this case.
You don't want my report.
I would like Mary to provide the report because it's her, uh, that's the order we're in right now, but.
I haven't.
Go ahead. I'm just, I'm just marking that there's different rules for different people. That's what I'm remarking on right now.
All right, um, it was asked that uh, people wanted some information pertaining to the uh, new event that we're gonna be uh, working on to replace or to be our spring event um, to replace the birdhouse thing. Um, birdhouse was pushed away because of whatever circumstances that was. Uh, the, the questions were concerning what we're, uh, we're going to use as a replacement program for the birdhouse festival. We've been told last year that it was getting too big. The birdhouse program was done in conjunction with ASK and is no longer a viable program as ASK was unable to come to terms with the village. Everybody knows that. The task force therefore had to come up with something that would be different due to artistic rights. We could not do the birdhouse festival uh, while staying within a similar budget using some of the same resources which we have done. The new program is going to be one concerning children's safety and security in our village. It will make use of resources from the village, schools, the BOCs and trades programs, local civic groups, the BSBPA, BACC, and most importantly, the kids. Um, we are in the final planning stages now and by the next village board meeting, we will have the lion's share of the pieces all together so that we can present the new program in a professionally acceptable way. But I have two names that I want you guys to remember and it will sort of guide you as to what we're doing with this program. Because Ben, you were complaining that you didn't know anything about the program. Charlotte, Sina, Suzanne, Lyle. Remember those names. This is what it's about. Safety for the kids.
Are you telling us what the program is?
We haven't, we haven't got all the pieces together yet. I said by the next.
You were brought up here to tell us about the project and you're not.
And I just did.
What is the project?
Okay, I'll go back and do it again.
What's the safety?
I ain't going though. I ain't going nowhere. Uh, the task force therefore had to come up with something that would be a different due to artistic rights. Uh, while staying within a similar budget and using some of the same resources which we have. Did you hear that?
Heard that.
Okay. The new program is going to be one concerning children's safety and security in our village. Did you hear that?
Can you expound on that, please?
We don't have all the parts and pieces done yet, which I said, I'll, I'll repeat the whole thing.
I, I think.
It'll make use of the research. It'll make use of the resources from the village, schools, BOCs and trades programs, local civic groups, the BSBPA, BACC, and most importantly, the kids. We are in the final planning stages now. And by the next village board meeting, we will have the lion's share of all the pieces together so we can present the new program in a professionally acceptable way. I don't want to have this parts and pieces given to you and then you go, oh, well, we can't do that. How much is this?
I'm just confused why you're standing here and not giving us, that's all. I'm just confused.
We don't have the parts and pieces all finished.
So, all right, so I guess we're done for now. He was done five minutes ago.
Yeah. I, I was confused because I was waiting for something.
Ray, can I just ask you a quick question? Parts and pieces, you mean, so you're trying to develop a cost estimate and materials list and all that?
There you go.
Provide to us so that we can budget appropriately for that.
To, to budget, the budget is gonna be very hard to put your finger on only because there are so many community parts, like I said, BOCs, the trades, BSBPA, BACC. They're all gonna be helping. And I don't know yet what exactly the cost is gonna be. We have all the lumber that we're gonna need to do the projects. We have assembly lines lined up with the trades programs at the school. I've been in meetings with the superintendent of schools. I've been in meetings with BSBPA, BACC. And we're just gonna refine those so that we can present it in a professional way.
Is there an intent to have an early or late spring or early summer festival?
Hopefully, it, it will probably be uh, the same weekend that the color run is at the school. So we have a captive audience of children.
It would, it would just be incredibly helpful for when we finally approve the budget if we had a rough cost estimate. That's all.
It will be within the budget of the birdhouse festival from last year, whatever that was. That's what we're.
And, and the, the point I was, I have made before and then I'll make again is um, before you commit uh, to doing a project, um, it would be good to present the details of what you intend to do so that we know what we are allocating the nine thousand, six hundred, forty dollars of taxpayer money to. Um, and not find out after that money's been obligated without our consent, which is our job to, to allocate and approve these funds. Um, and that's a, the, one way that task forces operate is a concern to me because that money has not been approved for this coming year, but you're already committing the funds. So, so we should know, even if it's a surprise to the public, we should approve the use of those funds before they're obligated.
I thought thirty thousand was. That's part of that. It's part of that. We have to, we have to say in that thirty, if you're giving me thirty thousand dollars for the entire year, I have to tell you that this part's gonna cost me uh, nine hundred and twelve dollars and sixteen cents.
We, we have to know what almost ten thousand dollars is going to be used for before I feel comfortable allocating that money. I'd like to know what it's used for. We, we have to know what almost ten thousand dollars is going to be used for before I feel comfortable allocating that money. I'd like to know what it's used for.
I just.
Everything else, there's a use. There's banners, twenty-five hundred banners, there's flags, there's Memorial Day, you know. But there's this ten thousand dollars, that's a big black hole. All I'm doing, asking is for information, what do you intend to do with that money? It's a reasonable question. It's our responsibility to ask it.
You know what?
Yeah, waiting for the answer. And I don't want. Mister Mayor, your sister once again is heckling from the back.
Gina.
And. And something should be said when your sister heckles from the back.
My name is Gina.
I will, I will say that if you can do it better.
That's not the point, right?
Yeah, it is. It is because we're trying to work as volunteers to get this all done. And the people that are gonna benefit from this are the village and the kids. If you'd rather not have that and because you wanna know where that nine hundred and twelve dollars and sixteen cents is gonna be spent. And then the next three hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-two cents is gonna be spent. And if it's okay with Ben, then we can do it. I can't do that with this kind of a.
That's not what I'm asking you to do. There's a ten thousand dollar project. Now that, that is. I've asked, I've asked actually Mayor Rossin multiple times, months ago, months ago. When I found out that there were other plans in place and, you know, what's happening? And I, I was refused an answer.
There weren't other plans in place.
I was told, I'll be told in time. You know, this is part of what we could all be working together on instead of in a polarized way where we don't have any clue.
I'm taking it back over here, Ben, at this point, because this has been a little over.
No, I'm telling you, you will know, you will know by the next meeting.
Right.
Where the costs are that we can think.
Right, there is another public comic session coming up in a few minutes, so let's let it go.
Thank you, Mary.
Mary, anything in the library or anything else? Okay.
I have first quarter information from the fire department. Total response was, response calls were one hundred and eight. Thirty-seven of them were in March alone and it was three hundred plus man hours committed by our, our volunteers. There were three structure fires, eight mutual aid, five motor vehicle accidents and twenty-one other various calls. There was two hundred and fifty hours, man hours given for training, three department drills and three individual company trainings. One of our fire trucks is out for repair and is due back April eighteenth. That's one, one forty-three. And then. The mayor and chief have been discussing with the town of Boston and town of Milton, the fire contracts. Currently, the chief is also looking into a low stat program. A low stat program is a length of service award program. It's something to, you know, thank our firefighters for all they do. Considering that they're non-employees, but they, they essentially do the work of employees for this village. And so they're looking into the cost for that. They also received the FEMA grant reimbursement, which was sixty-four thousand dollars. And the Palm Sunday Breakfast and Good Friday Fish Fry went really well and was really well attended. That's all I got for fire.
While we're talking first responders, I, I don't get this opportunity often, but what's that? You go ahead.
Sorry, female completed the eighty bathroom renovations.
That's great.
Yeah.
I wanna thank Officer Bream and Officer Straight, who is one of our new officers. Officer Straight walked out the door right now. I'm trying to catch him here. But we wanna thank them for all they do for our community and Officer Straight is actually, as new full-time officer, taking on. Kind of the head of the police's union as well. So he's got a thankless job coming up. Next year, we have to do the contract negotiations there again. So thanks to everything our police. Good job, Scott. Ben.
I'll be quick. The, I don't know if people have seen, but it's, April is poetry month. And the committee on the arts has done a great job getting poetry out into different. Stores and nonprofits and other organizations throughout town. There's buckets with rolled up random poems that people can take and, and they're posting them on the. On the walls and windows of stores as well. And so they've really done a great job. I did volunteer with them to roll up hundreds of poems and. And there's some events coming up that I'd just like to announce. April thirteenth, there's a poetry writing workshop. Twelve to three P M in the Ball Spa Library. And these are all free, again, part of the month. April seventeenth, open mic night. Doors and registration open at six thirty at the Real McCoy Beer Company, twenty Washington Street. Featuring Stephen Gilfoyle as the MC and poet. April twenty-seventh, poetry performance reading at Brookside, seven P M, Twenty-One Fairground. Featuring Elaine Hanley, Marilyn McCabe and Joseph Bruschak. And you can make reservations at BrooksideMuseum.org and those are all free. And then just to mention again that the, just quickly, the. Park and Tree Board is having an Arbor Day celebration, April twenty-seventh at ten A M in Kelly Park. They're gonna be planting some trees. Everyone's welcome to. Participate and learn about how to plant trees well.
Tree's coming, right? I got a panicked email from Caitlin, like, I'm not sure if the trees we intend are gonna get there in time. We may need a replacement and now it's coming. Yes, so crossing our fingers, but it sounds like it's good to go. Thank you for that. Okay, there's no, this is a new business. It's kind of new, we run long with public comments or the comments about the budget earlier. So now we're a public comment on any issue, three minutes apiece. Anybody I see this girl, they're seeing us, I look up. Ellie, you're next.
Yeah, go ahead. You can go first.
Sorry. Oh, a, a reminder from our attorney, be nice, everybody. There you go, your public service announcement.
Jason Gertler, ninety-nine Roman Street. Thank you very much to Ray, Mary, Gina and the entire events task force for trying to do something to replace the birdhouse festival. What you just said gave me chills. It was stepped on and trounced. For anybody that doesn't know, this is Suzanne Lyle. Suzanne Lyle disappeared from the SUNY Albany area in nineteen ninety-eight. Ben, how long have you been a resident in this town? Not that long.
Twenty years.
You have no idea. Ninety-eight is how long ago?
Twenty-six.
You have no idea what her disappearance has done to this town. And the people worried it. I went to school with Suzanne. I have a son who is as old as Charlotte Center. We all know what happened there. Disgusting. And it's disgusting of you to step on those girls' names. When somebody's up here trying to present a program to honor them. And for you to do that? Disgust.
Next up is Ellie.
Ellie Dillon, one-one-six Malta Avenue, Ballston Spa. Bernadette, this is for you. The sign is in. It's a large visitor center sign. We had one put up. It didn't make the grade. We fixed it. We moved the visitor center. So it's the first thing you see inside the National Bottle Museum. And the traffic already is, is taking things off the, the rack. So I'm urging the village trustees and the residents to please put stuff. Pamphlets, everybody who's a small business. Bring your pamphlets and put them in the visitor center because it's now up and running. Okay?
So. Ellie? The only thing I was gonna ask, because I didn't know, is when he was, Mr. Raymond was presenting. Yes. What was, I'm sorry. This is my first meeting, so I, I didn't know. I was just gonna ask, when he's trying to present something with ideas. And you say that it needs to go to you guys first. When does it come to the taxpayers that we get to vote on it? Does it? Do we, do we get a say in his good idea? So Facebook? Is, is that what I gotta do? Put it on Facebook?
Well, I'm not against it. I, I don't know what it is.
No, 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 I know, but.
To, to answer your question, Kelly, more or less you're doing it right now in public comments and also, you know, letters, social media, etc.
Throwing this nice idea out and yes, he wants to present it all in the right way. Have his facts, have his money straight. Nobody's talking about, obviously, like I said before, that I did a lot of soliciting for Saratoga County for the nursing home. He's gone, he's got volunteers, he's got wood. The things that I heard that he's talking about, he can't give you a total rate yet until he knows what he's gonna need. Am I wrong? And do we get a say in it, other than coming here? Or is it all just you guys that get to say, no?
Your, your voice, your voice here matters very much. Yeah, that's been for a couple of years at least and beyond that, and the policy that.
Okay, I, I just didn't know what the rules were. I didn't, I didn't know if we, you know, other than which. A lot of people don't like the Facebook thing. I try to keep my comments to myself, but sometimes it gets a little overbearing, you know, and you need to. Kind of get your voice out there, let it be heard, let it be known. Even, you know, you help when you can. You got these volunteers that are coming when they can. Taking time away from their families. That's great. I give you guys a lot of credit. Thank you.
And it was Kelly Taylor, just for the record, in case. Liz, go ahead.
Liz Cromer, eighty-nine. Hi, just comments about the Wizwall Park. I thought it was terrific. It has many elements that people have said they wanted. Beautiful. I just, one minor comment, I'd like the walks to actually be like brick colored, so they go with the buildings, but that's. Detailed. Also, Bernadette, I remember I asked last time, I don't know if it's possible for you to get when you report the fire department. How much is in the village? How much is out of the village? I'd like to have that. And I apologize for my outburst, but I was. Really dismayed to hear from the attorney that the mayor could shut off. A trustee who was in the middle of a sentence by proposing a motion. That's not my understanding from our rules and procedures. It says clearly that. A trustee, you know, in discussion unless they're breaking the rules of order can continue and is not to be interrupted. So I would really seriously look at our rules and procedure because. That to me is a violation of that trustee's right to express his opinion. Thank you.
Thanks.
Ray?
Yeah, sixteen minute of our cabinet. First of all, thank you for those that are trying to defend it. Okay.
This way, though, right?
I, I didn't, I don't wanna fall over. I've always been the defender. So having somebody come to my defense is unusual for me. But I do appreciate it. Just have a quick question about the visitor center, if I may. Is the handicap accessible? Does anybody know?
I can answer.
I, I, go ahead. You just got a courtesy.
Just curious. Can I get in there with my walker?
It's one step up. We're working on it.
Okay, that's, that's, that's cool. No, I really appreciate that.
The old building.
Thank you so much for that. Rest of my questions are about Wizwall Park. I heard Liz say she wants to have the bricks there to keep it authentic and that. Back when I was on the Park and Tree group. And when we were first proposing things for that, I went to John Cromie, who I felt was a real good source of historical correctness. I said to him, what, how do we do this park so that it fits in with the way that this village has done it in previous times? And he said to me that every time the park was redone, it was redone in what was current for that time. And I found that interesting. And it was brought up at that time that. Somebody wanted a Victorian-looking pavilion forty feet long and, you know, a million feet high. And he said that would be totally wrong because we are not a Victorian village. But I heard on the presentation that the pavilion is still gonna be a Victorian style?
Octagonal, I don't know by Victorian.
No, he, he said Victorian, if I'm not mistaken.
I believe it was trying to fit in with other things in the village, like we have the spring down at Old Iron Spring, kind of keeping with shapes that we see around the village and.
Okay, well, you know, like I said, I'm just going by what Johnson and, you know, I, I took him as authority. And the sculpture that we're gonna have right next to that, is that gonna be a Victorian sculpture?
Not next to that, but you mean in the corner where the.
Wherever the, the fountain's gonna be.
I mean, that's not something that's been yet decided, but.
Because you would want that consistency with the brick and the pavilion and you don't want something that looks like a camel with a fish on top or something.
That's why we were really excited to find someone who knows stone work locally, because if you look up the fountains, you don't find what you want.
Okay. Something Donna said, and I have to agree.
Yeah.
About the menorah. Where is the menorah gonna be placed? I see the Christmas tree, but we also have a menorah that goes up every year. Info about the trees that were done in the study, I thought there were some that had to be taken down. I, I may be wrong on that. And, oh my God, I hope we're gonna get rid of the dreaded bishop weed. That's not gonna be in that park anymore, I hope.
Thank you, Ray. We have one to add too. Let's go for it.
Yeah, Kristen.
Go ahead.
Hi there, Kristen Ikuluchi, twenty-four Chapman Street. I'm just kind of a little confused at the, the new program. I know that there's gonna be more details coming. But I just, I think, you know, I, I agree that we would wanna understand what the program is before the board makes the decision to use. Those funds that are left over from the birdhouse for that. I think, you know, that's, that's the whole question, right? Like, we don't know what the program is, so. But we're already giving and allocating or making the choice to allocate those funds to that program. So I think, you know, that's kind of where the confusion is. Not that the program wouldn't be valuable or that, that wouldn't honor, you know, those, those folks from our community. But just like, what's the program? Why are we already funding it? Why wouldn't we maybe consider other committees or other, you know, projects around our community? That might, could utilize that ten thousand dollars. You know, I, I think it's just the question of why does it de facto go to the mayor's events task force for an unknown project? I think. You know, that's, that's still a question in my mind and I think that's what I was understanding trustee Baskin was trying to, to, to ask. So. So I, that's just, again, my question. I'm sure it's gonna be a great event. It sounds like you already have great partnerships already lined up. But it's just, again, this, you know, perception of special treatment to the mayor's events task force, that is the question. You get the budget even though the plans aren't yet revealed to the board or to the public. That's the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on Zoom.
Laurie.
I'm sorry, Laurie, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I just wanted to check in quickly on the library. And well, first off, I wanna thank Mayor Rossi and the village trustees and our liaisons. They've been amazing to us and we've been meeting regularly to talk about the process of the library, phase one A and ongoing construction into the future. And with their support, we've just gotten very good guidance and very good decision-making partners in order to just approach our. Our planning for the, for the first phase and onward. But I wanted to let everybody know that Southern Ederon Deck Library System. Is our partner as far as we were. Kind of committed to raising a certain amount of funds and then they would decide as a trustee board to vote whether or not we would be deemed. Sixty-five percent of that project total by the state. So. Southern, Southern Ederon, I can't talk today, Southern Ederon Deck Library System is giving us their dedicated four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Which is sixty-five percent of the project total to the state and our match that we raised was two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Towards this project, phase one A, which is the small bump out, which will be the local history room and the reading room on the second floor, local history room on the bottom floor, attached to the community room. I'm really proud of Friends of Library, our five oh one C three. I'm proud of our community. I'm proud of the board of trustees. As a community, we raised about, just looking here at some of our figures, twelve thousand, five hundred dollars through a charity auction. Tons of people from the community have donated to the library. Alfred Solomon donated a hundred thousand dollars, McDonald Grant twenty-five thousand, Routh and Trust forty thousand. The Speckled Pig dined to, dined to donate three hundred dollars. Stewart's has pledged fifty thousand to us. Mary Beth Walsh has given us forty thousand. And we've been really working very, very hard, um, as, with a grants committee and foundations committee. To make this happen along with all of the people from our, our wonderful community, so. Um, I just wanted to let you know this, and as far as the timeline for phase one A and the. Local history room and the reading room, um, the contractor bids will go out late in the summer. And, um, the plan is that there'll be shovel in the ground in the fall, and, um, we're just very excited about this, and. The best part about it all is that our, our group as a board and all the folks that have been involved in this are from. All sides of the aisle, and it's really just people bringing heart to the project, and. They're, uh, rolling up their sleeves, so thank you, everyone, and, um, we're excited and looking forward so much to sharing this with everybody.
Lori, I just wanna underscore what you said earlier, because when we talked earlier today, we weren't so sure, but you're saying that the sales money is good to go now.
Well, what hap, the way that it works is that sales votes. They get a pot of money from the state and they vote as to where they wanna allocate those funds, so several libraries applied. And sales indicated to the state that they want us to be awarded four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So the state essentially, from what we understand, it's like a stamp of approval once they go through the, the, um, applications. But it's very, very rare that a, application will get declined because sales is given the money to, to dictate where they want it to go, but. You know, obviously, we will know soon by probably July, like, it'll be in writing, but this is where it stands at this point.
Phenomenal job, thank you so much for all you guys are doing with this.
Well, thank you, and we couldn't do it without our community, and we taught, we say this all the time, that, um. It's, it's been so rewarding, um, to just work with everybody from the village, um, to volunteers and, you know, the. Um, formal government folks and the politicians, it's been a real learning experience, and. People have just always, you know, pitched in and offered everything that they could to help us, so we're really grateful to you all.
Thank you, Lori.
Yep.
Let's hear it. Next up on Zoom.
East High Street. The board passed meeting rules, I think, last year that stated how the meetings would run, who could speak when, how, uh. How during votes, what the guidelines would be, what interruptions could happen or not happen, I think that, uh. I, I have them somewhere, if, if the attorney needs them to look at, to be able to get back to.
Guys have them as well.
So that would be great, uh, I'd like to bring the focus back that the, uh, comments surrounding the task force. Uh, was about doing work like an official committee, not about, uh, cutting. Family Fun Day, not about starving the children or abandoning our community spirit. Uh, it has a sizable budget. The budget is growing, as we heard, by fifty percent more in the last couple of years, it sounds like it's thriving. I know when I was on the Historical Commission, which was an official, uh, commission, committee. In the village, we came to the village for fifteen hundred dollars, we were shot down, I think we were given five hundred dollars. So when you're talking about thousands and thousands, when you're talking about, uh, five figures, you know, as a budget, it seems to me that. It should be an official committee, period. To do otherwise, makes it open to criticism, that I don't think anybody wants or, or cares to hear. Um, now, as far as the minutes go, the idea that the minutes of the last meeting were passed with opinions. And biased comments written in was a deterrent, uh, to some on the board, uh, not to raise. The past where they raised their voices, if you wanna discourage yelling, create a jar, have the guilty party put a dollar in it. You could even donate it to the, the mayor's task force, and that seems a lot more like keeping a village of friends. But targeting some trustees and, and targeting them that way is not a good idea, and it's not, uh, it's, it's partisan. And lastly, it says with New York State, accuracy and neutrality when taking minutes, ensure the minutes are accurate, unbiased. And reflect what is discussed and decided during the meeting, avoid inserting personal opinions or interpretations. I think that should be followed, thank you.
Thank you, Keith, your, uh, resume for becoming our next village attorney has been rejected.
Gina Morozzi, Ten Old Glory Lane, oh my God. The task force was not given special treatment. For that money for the replacement program for the Birdhouse Festival. The public was in an uproar over losing the Birdhouse Festival. And we volunteered to replace that program to please the community. So for the people that wanna cash shade on us once again, because apparently they have nothing better to do, I'm being nice, Carla. Um, stop, please just stop, all right, if you don't want the program, we, believe me, I have a life outside of events. I have several jobs. I could use the summer off to get ready for Family Fun Day. So if you don't want it, say it now, we'll stop, we'll, we'll return the wood to Curtis. So Ben, you got wood, you got shop people, you got. Workforce people, kinda makes me think that it might be some kind of wood craft thing, do you think? Does that make sense, if you read between the lines? Seriously. So, as soon as everything, and it's almost all in place, we'll let you know the, the small details about this program. But we, all we asked for was what was left over from the Birdhouse Project. To carry it over, and I'm not saying we're gonna spend all that money, we'll be happy to return whatever we don't use. But right now, this is new to us, we're taking on this event because hundreds and hundreds of people. Were complaining that the program was going away, and we said we could probably do something to replace it. And, and keep that community together and it's going, you don't want it, I'm fine with it, seriously.
Seeing no hands, except for Jared Ike Luchis.
I'll just try to keep this brief, one quick piece and one a little bit longer. Yep, Jared Ike Lucci, twenty-four Chapman Street, first off, I just want to make a note, there's been a lot of talk about volunteering and people taking their time for this village. I appreciate everything all of our board members or mayor, all of our staff do for us, uh, I appreciate everything, all of the other volunteers. Uh, including all of the other committees that have not been named this evening in boards, um, a lot of people put in a lot of time. That isn't always seen in the most high-profile places. Um, now, gonna read a statement here, um. About six months ago, the board discussed and adopted a resolution condemning the innocent, innocent killing of. Uh, the killing of innocent Israeli and Palestinian civilians. I want to take a moment to reflect on what has happened since that resolution was passed, what the spirit of that resolution was. And how this board can further resolve itself in the face of grave human rights abuses and war crimes aided and abetted by our own federal government. Since that resolution passed, at least twenty-seven thousand more Palestinians have been killed by Israeli Defense Forces, the IDF. Including about twelve thousand children. These conservative numbers are widely accepted by human rights organizations, the United States government, and even the Israeli government. International aid organizations have been prevented from accessing the besieged population in Gaza. And attacked by the IDF, as we've seen in the April first airstrike against World Central Kitchen volunteers. Approximately five hundred health workers and two hundred aid workers have been killed by the IDF in Gaza in the last six months. According to the Committee to Protect Journalists, ninety-five journalists have been killed by the IDF in Gaza as they report on the ongoing war. The International Court of Justice in The Hague determined and recently reaffirmed that the IDF is plausibly committing a genocide in Gaza. Our tax dollars are directly aiding this atrocity. I was unable to locate the text of the resolution passed in the October twenty-third meeting, as it does not appear in the minutes or on the website. However, as I remember the resolution, the aim was to express disdain at the wanton killing of innocents. In doing so, the board was expressing moral outrage at the actions undertaken. Both by Hamas in their October seventh attack, and by the IDF in their disproportionate response. I urge this board to renew its moral outrage in the wake of the ICJ's ruling. On the plausibility of genocide and the role we Americans play in supporting it. If your moral outrage has dissipated, now that innocents are dying and overwhelmingly Palestinian. I question your commitment to the moral principles. If your moral outrage at the death of innocence persists, you as a board have a duty that the United, to resolve. That the United States should stop supporting this genocide with billions of dollars, and should advocate for a political solution to the century-long conflict, thank you.
Thank you, Chris, I know you wanna go.
Chris Bu, Six Kaling Drive, uh, one of the reasons I was gonna come up, unfortunately she left, uh, probably. To go home, but I wanna thank Caitlin again for, uh, the excellent work, uh, I know at Park and Tree Board, we've heard about this studio. Studio A presentation, I know you, Mayor, and Caitlin have been doing a lot to meet with Studio A, and I was, I was quite impressed. Uh, with the layout, uh, the. Three D modeling, uh, what's to be expected, uh, where the flag's gonna be placed, the tree. Um, everything else, it just, it, it looks incredible, and again, it makes me excited, all the hard work that we've been with volunteering and, uh, Friends of Wizwall. Uh, and other members of the community really see that, I did, I never expected it to come to that fruition. I do support everybody who mentioned the menorah and the menorah lighting, I would also be interested. To see where that goes as well, uh, again. I'm just gonna put it out there, I don't get political over stuff that impacts my family. It is what it is, you'll hate Jews, you always will hate Jews, you will always be anti-Semitic, you'll always spin it around some Palestinian nonsense. You'll continue to do it through and through and through, you'll throw numbers out there that come from Hamas, again. Keep it to yourself. Be prepared to debate it, instead of taking your soapbox. And again, casting shade worse against the event committee, but to members of your community. To have, again, family and friends have been impacted quite a bit. Do a little research what happened on October seventh, do a little research on who was attacked. Do a little research on the kibbutz down there that supported Israeli-Palestinian relations and how they were butchered. Do the research on the survivor who's come back and mentioned how many times she's been shot and she survived, and maybe laughed at, made a game of it. Do the research what the IDF is really doing. Besides coming up on your soapbox, trying to be better than everybody else, throwing numbers out there that have no backing. You just show the rest of the community where your true heart lies, it's anti-Semitic, it's a shame, I'm sorry, but it is what it is.
Are you speaking to me?
No, I'm speaking to the board about a comment made, Jared, he's doing it in proper, he's doing it in proper format, Jared.
Who is he speaking to?
Oh, and you did this, you did that, who is he talking to? Again, again.
Gentlemen? Thank you.
Board.
You get your twenty seconds back.
Two, two different kinds of rules here.
No, it's not.
The board is who I am actually speaking of, because again, when that resolution, if there was a resolution that was made, it was just something to talk about. Uh, that was quickly turned around by a member of the board and tried to make, uh, back then, it was, uh, tried. It was made to seem like it was a two-sided issue, when it really wasn't, there was a massacre in a holiday that really killed a lot of people. And really shook up a community. That's had a lot in its history. Thank you.
Great, goodbye, mate, do you think it's appropriate to address people who've just spoken by calling them out directly?
Jared is.
Accusing them of antisemitism?
Jared, it's actually addressing part of the public record at that point in time, and you stressing.
He said you, you, you.
You, as in a general sense, I took it as, I didn't necessarily specific, you didn't name names, you're identifying yourself at this point.
You stood up at your, at your soapbox, he's talking about him.
Okay.
And that's against the rules of procedure, you're supposed to direct your comments to the board.
He was facing the board the entire time, you know what, the first person who went down, I mean, if he wasn't, wait a minute, Carla, cause she earlier told me five different times, make sure that they're addressing. The board.
That didn't happen, did it?
Yeah, actually did.
Not just now.
Kristen's already spoken, right?
Yep.
So.
My concern, I don't know who Motorola Edge is, so.
We'll try and cross our fingers at this point, be ready, be on the ready. Motorola, Motorola Edge, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Ryan Johnson, one fifty-four Milton Avenue.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, this is my first time viewing under the new, uh, dynamic, and it, it was interesting as I watched it with my ten-year-old daughter. Uh. As she said, those two men seemed very frustrated, and they're yelling. And I said, uh, probably are frustrated the way some people were a few months ago. So when, when you don't have that luxury of having the three-two, when you walk into a meeting, it's frustrating, that's where you reach across the aisle. And, and you try to work together. And you won't have that much frustration. Um, curious, I, I, and I need an answer to this, wha, what is the name of the task force? That leads up the Family Fun Day, is it just the, the, you know what I mean, is, is it the mayor's task force? Is it the task force?
It's actually titled, Space Brothers and Ballers' Five Men's Task Force.
So when somebody, when somebody uses. The name, the mayor's task force, they are trying to politicize it like it's your baby, correct?
Hank Rossi called it that, probably the other meeting.
But that's not what the name is anymore, is it? It's the, it's just the task force. So, um, I, I, I hear a lot of people saying they appreciate, they appreciate, they appreciate, I, I praise to my kids, when you appreciate something. You let people know that. So during the meeting, as my ten-year-old daughter was watching Gina Morozzi speak, she goes, who is that? And I said, that's Miss Gina, I, I, my kids that, when. I have them show that respect, that's Mr. Frank, that's Miss Gina, that, and if I was around Sean Raymond, it would be Mr. Sean. And I said, that's Miss Gina, and she, and she was like, I, I'm proud of the way she stands up for herself, and she stands up for what she thinks is right. And she's like, what is she arguing about? I said, she's trying to fight for the Family Fun Day that we had last year, and she's like, do people wanna get rid of it? I said, I, I don't know that people wanna get rid of it, but they definitely don't wanna support it as much as could be, because when you, when you care about something. You, you don't attack it, you find ways to get more information, which leads me to Ray going up and explaining about the bird program. There's, obviously, he wants to do it professionally, those are his words, and I think he's excited about it. And then to have somebody from the board up there just basically. Squat on what he was saying for no other reason, if, if you wanted more information. Those are three words you just need, or four words, I need more information. And, and Ben, he, I'm sure he would've said, that's coming in two weeks, I wanna give you a professional thing, but you just kept cutting him down. So again, when you appreciate something, you show it, you don't wanna attack it. Um. Uh, just one last thing, you know, there's a lot of, I, I've, I've noticed a couple entitled people that have gone up there. And I, I would just say, uh, narcissists think everything is about them.
That's exactly right.
Talking to me, well, no, they weren't, you just think they were talking about you, and maybe if they, if you're thinking that. Then maybe you ought to think about what you're saying. Uh, I appreciate everybody up there and the work they are doing, have a good night.
Good night, thank you. Okay. Yes? If you want to come.
I know you mentioned about.
Wait, identify yourself all I could, so come on now, you know how it works.
That's all right, it's any toward Division Street.
Oh, yeah.
The name sounds familiar, right? Uh, Wizwall Park, I know we mentioned about lighting improvements, I didn't know if there's other power, we're gonna be done improvements. Being on the ground, that'd be the time to do it, and also security, like cameras, like other parks do. For vandals and other people that destroy things after we build them.
We got it in Kelly Park, uh, we're working on the, uh, iron spray right now, make sure we have the spectrum connection, and then the next logical one is Wizwall. We got them in Kelly Park. Uh, we're working on the, uh, iron spray right now. Make sure we have a spectrum connection and then the next logical one is Whistull. Especially as we do this.
Yeah, you got it. Proper time to go.
You got it. Thanks, Ed. I think I see Bob Bush. Folks, folks, thank you.
I like the plans of the Whistull Park. Looks like they have a pretty good grasp where they don't want to do any, of course, things changing. One question I want to bring up is, um, in those plans, in that master plan, Jeff was his name?
Jeff.
Jeff said, um, in that master plan, I didn't hear anything about who's going to maintain it once it's completed. I mentioned, I know things been thrown around about DPW doing it. DPW, they have enough under plate and if they're going to be doing that, then they should be, they should be like a a person that mows the grass and does that as a full-time job, not just, let's just fix the bench when benches. Industry. I just, just a, an idea to get some sort of game plan of long-term, who's going to maintain it. So that way the park has a full lifespan of its potential. Now let's get on to something else that we don't want to talk about, but anyways. I'm telling the board, I'm not telling anyone we're here. It's all right here. Let's keep the world politics to the federal government and not the local level. It doesn't go on here. As all was witnessed here, we saw two people here bickering back and forth, wanting to talk, wanting to talk. Yes, Ben, when you want to talk, you don't know who wanted to talk. Yet you guys voted yes to everything. So what was the whole point of that whole thing? The reason, it was all done email in the first place. Transparency, I get the transparency part, I really do. Um, but as far as that stuff goes, we get told a lot at, at the meetings here. You guys talk about it amongst yourselves, whether it's email, whichever way it is, it was done before it came here. Why is it being debated here? Why is it being discussed here again? That's my question. As far as raising your voices and stuff like that, come on, guys, really? And Ben, there's more professional way of addressing what you're addressing than what you did. Because you need to clean that up, be more professional about it. I'm not yelling and screaming, I'm not putting you down. I'm just telling you, do more professional, choose your words, think of them before you speak because everyone hears, sees how it really is. Whether you say, however you say it. Um, you could be professional, you're not degrading someone, you're not cutting someone down. Just simply say it. I think Ryan Johnson said it best when he said, just say any more information. In order to give, I know you said that, but you said that anyway, I don't know. Just say any more information to give a quality vote. Done. None of that are nonsense. Because the drugs is meeting on, when it really needs to be. Just be professional. Those are everybody.
Do we have somebody else or no?
It's Shirley.
Okay. Shirley, go ahead.
Yeah, I wasn't going to speak again, um, but obviously I have to, um, because obviously I was just personally attacked. Um, but first I want to thank the members of the board who have tried to maintain order throughout this whole meeting. I know that's not hard, especially when you constantly have these psychopaths coming at you. And I hate to go there with those kind of terms. But when I speak, my husband speaks and then someone stands up and starts talking about Israel when they're obviously trying to make a personal attack against the Jew in the room. It's just absolutely disgusting. So that's kind of the negative part of this community. But fortunately, there are so many positives. I've just heard so many amazing people speak tonight. You know, they, they stood up, they talked about what this event's task force has done for their families, the impact it's had on the community. You know, be it like what, uh, one community member said about how it's helped the Boy Scouts or how it's helped and impacted local businesses. So despite these personal attacks, um, I just want everyone to know that this is a great community. You're going to always have these negative kind of nancies in the corner because they're jealous and, you know, they need to feel important. But again, thank you, uh, Frank, Bernadette and Mary and everyone else that's sitting up there that really does care about this village and wants to see it move forward, um, in a positive light. I personally appreciate it and I know that so many others do as well. Thank you.
Hey, Shirley. Anybody else?
I want Kristen on Zoom again if you want.
I believe she is a no because she spoke in this session already, right? Correct me if I'm wrong, everybody. She, okay, thank you. I was going crazy. Other business simply, but not limited to board response to public comment.
I guess I'll address some comments and also have a statement to read afterwards. That hopefully will make it to the minutes.
Unnecessary.
Be professional. So I think what's happened here is a lot of you fallen victim to a completely inherently false narrative. Because there is no one in the budget workshop that wanted to get rid of the events. There was a question whether or not we needed to increase the budget since they didn't even use last year's budget. Um, because they got donations. There wasn't a logical or rational reason provided that for some reason they won't receive those donations this year. So my question was, why are we allocating if we, if they may not even need it? It could always stay in fund balance and be appropriated if they don't get the donations. So, um, I also thought that maybe there's other locations where the money might have a more long-lasting impact than one day of fun. So that's actually what happened. I don't know where the disinformation campaign uh, occurred. Um, I'm assuming social media, but be careful on social media because people lie a lot.
That's right.
And, um, to, you know, in regards to the task force, and I don't think anybody wants to disband, disband the task force. I think everybody appreciates all the effort you do. I know how tough it is to volunteer. I remember when I was a board member on FANS and I basically had to put in about 200, 200 hours between developing the plan, assisting with the survey, um, actually working in work crews, building the playground, and then years later working with other volunteers to maintain it, um, until basically those folks phased out. So I'm well aware of doing hundreds of hours of volunteer. And I'm still aware of it because I've transitioned to doing that kind of stuff. And I appreciate the one lady who's here because she said, you know, I'm glad that the board volunteers, because we do volunteer a vast amount of time. You know, $4,000 isn't going to cover six, six weeks of our time. So, um, we, we volunteer hours and hours and hours. So, um, and I don't think that's really appreciated. I also heard regarding the, um, raise. Now again, budget's up, I made it very clear. I don't care either way. But we should be unilateral and consistent. Um, either everybody gets a raise or nobody gets a raise. And I know there's some people that talk, came up here that said they work for the state or for other municipalities. Well, if you're in a collective bargaining agreement, you get programs, cost of living increases. That's, and I don't know of any state worker who said, sorry, don't want it. No thanks. So, I mean, I guess it could be argued, well, you knew what the job they've gone in. So why do you need cost of living raises? So, um, but I don't know of anybody who's ever requested not to receive a raise. So, um, I'm not really sure, you know, how compelling that argument is. As I said, I don't care. Give me a raise, don't give me yours. I don't care. However, it must be consistent. Um, collective bargaining units are getting two, um, other staff are getting two and a half. Apparently, planning board is five or six, I don't know. Um, I just would like it to be consistent across the board. And that's pretty typical for any other municipality that's involved. Is everybody gets pretty much the same thing, um, unless there's particular merit. So. Hopefully, I addressed every like comments that were, mention that. Um, I'd like to read the statement.
Can I interrupt for one second to read that statement? But I, I need to correct some things you just stated because as somebody, uh, a member of a union sitting in our room, I think we need to take a step back here and get the reality on the record right now. The Village of Boston Spa is not required and does not actually use a cost of living adjustment. This came up actually during our Teamsters discussion and we informed them of it and they checked it at that point in time because they didn't realize it either. We do not have a cost of living adjustment. We generally tend to try to do equity in raises when we can. However, if you'll notice throughout the budget, there are exceptions all over the place. Lifeguards because of minimum wage issues. Library clerks because of minimum wage issues. The building clerk because her job is actually well beyond what the job description originally was and we recognized the fact that she deserved more in that role. Planning and zoning in this case, next year, next budget year are going to be asked to do mock scenarios to test the new zoning law. It is actually beyond what their normal functions are and they're going to be required to assist with that, hence more money for them, requested or not. There is a recognition that they're going to be tasked with all of that as well to help the zoning law situation. So to state categorically that we do COLAs, we do not. And Ed Brain sitting there can tell you as much as anybody that when we did the police contract, we did not do a lockstep move of X percent for everybody. The full-timers went to a new scale altogether. Back, if I had to guess right now, the Teamsters may do the same ultimately. And so there is not a general percentage given by the Village of Boston Spa in the budget for personal services lines. It does differ by category. So enough of the misinformation, you are part of this government. I don't know how you don't know this. That really scares me. Your statement?
So here's some, uh, information that I provided in a meeting. And basically this is all just factual references to state and federal guidance regarding stop sign installation and whether preferred treatments for pedestrian safety that were absent from the minutes. So statement one, there are numerous studies at municipalities across the country that clearly show stop signs do not reduce the speed of traffic and they actually increase speed between stop signs. MUTCD, the Manual of Traffic Control Devices, which the state requires all municipalities to comply with, indicates stop signs are not to be used for speed control. The MUTCD also states that always stop installation requires intersection to meet warrants described within the MUTCD and that analysis has not been done. The Governor's Traffic Safety Committee and the Pedestrian Bicycle Plan conducted for the village in this area on High Boulevard both recommend the use of RFBs, which is a reticular rapid flashing beacon if static pedestrian crossing signs are not affected. There is no mention by the Governor's Traffic Safety Committee or the pedestrian bicycle plans regarding the use of always stop in this manner.
People are saying they can't hear you.
I don't want to repeat it now.
You gotta get that microphone for you. That's why microphones shouldn't be shared. We should each have our own microphone.
Ben, that's your time. So Sean, who did the pedestrian bicycle master plan? Yes, they did. Wendy Holzberger, I spoke with last Friday from BHB, who stated some things about you that I'm going to leave out here, but I think you probably read.
Oh, that's nice.
Well, it's a question of licensure and engineering.
Let's keep it professional.
Well, it's, it is professional. That's the question ultimately. But also the statement that RFEs are not supposed to be used on unsignalized intersections. They're supposed to be used mid-block in the first place because there's confusion would be drawn from the other direction as to who's moving where and how with respect to the RFB, if it's not universal or in a fully, fully signalized intersection.
I'm sorry, that's not what the pedestrian safety actually.
That's, that's what BHB's top traffic engineer, BHB, who did our.
Apparently she doesn't know the Governor's Traffic Safety.
You like putting people in the middle.
No, actually, 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 Ben, Liz reached out to her. That's why I.
This is what you're doing.
No, no, Ben, Liz reached out to her as a common citizen to question her because I mentioned that I've talked to Wendy before and Wendy called me on Friday and said, what's, what's, what's with that? And I said, well, or two Fridays ago. And I said, well, you know, here's what's going on. And she told me exactly what I just told you.
I know, and she's categorically wrong.
No, you may not. You may not. You may not. You may not. Thank you.
Just go to the roundabout at 146 and 146A and you're going to find RFBs in an intersection that's not signalized.
Well, you can talk to Wendy.
I don't, I don't need to. If she needs to talk to me to give her some guidance, I can.
She's, she's licensed.
Just looking at, um, the listing on celebrations. And I've gone there and it was the, it was the task force. Did they provide a request, a budget request separately? I'm looking, I didn't see it in the details. Was there a listing of this is what the task force is requesting?
Everything you see except Family Fun Day, as they said the other day, was $2,000 more and they were taking down $18,000.
Right, but the whole list of stuff.
You're just looking at it.
Celebrations breakdown. Is there some separate list that is specifically for the events task force?
We, when we sat down about events, Melissa, I and Gina sat down, we took legacy events like Memorial Day Parade, which the FPA asked for. We took, uh, or, or sorry, not Memorial Day Parade, but a holiday parade, Memorial Day Parade for, uh, whoever runs it that given year because it's flipped between two organizations, uh, the $1,000 and what, uh, Swimming on Stars 5500, because that's a legacy event that we put in there. We asked Jen what she wanted for holiday decor. Uh, with DPW's help, $2,000. Uh, what am I missing there? We've got banners which have been technically, or typically, excuse me, $2,500. We have a set of banners. It's a total of two banner sets in the entirety of the budget, one in arts, one in celebrations. And I believe that's it. Am I forgetting anything? That's not earmarked as a.
No, no, just my point is I, I, I wasn't clear about which is going to task force and which is not because it doesn't, doesn't look like there's a specific, like Gina was saying that I said, put something in Facebook that wasn't accurate.
It wasn't.
Because there is no document saying this is going to the task force and this is.
Do you go to Swimming on the Stars?
So.
Do you attend Swimming on the Stars?
So what I'm saying is.
Do you attend Swimming on the Stars? Okay, and who puts it on?
So what I'm saying is.
Who puts it on?
What I'm saying is.
Who puts it on?
You're interrupting me.
I'm asking, I'm asking a question.
You're not being professional. You're not letting me talk.
But Ben, you're not being professional by not being honest right now. That's what.
I'm being honest. What I'm saying is I am not aware of how much is going to the task force. I don't know that. So that's all, that's the only comment, that's the only, um, thing I'm saying about that. So, um, let me, uh, now talk about, um, rules of procedure. I'm just going to read a couple sentences that I think are very important because, um, now it's three times that, um, I've tried to speak and have been shut down in a very undemocratic way that, uh, I think violates my speech rights. The rules, please say, the presiding officer must recognize board members before making motions and speaking. The member once recognized shall not be interrupted when speaking unless it is to call him or her order. And then a little further down says there's no limit to the number of times a member may speak on a matter. And then a little further down says there's no limit to the number of times a member may speak on a matter, so. Especially that last sentence makes me think. That if I indicate that I'm interested in contributing to a conversation that's happening. I should be allowed that stability and. And it's right in the rules of procedure, I have also. I bought a book on Robert's rules and I will talk about that at the next meeting and what applies and it doesn't apply here, I know. Our attorney has said previously that we don't actually follow the Robert's rules, so, but. Obviously, there's certain things that echo Robert's rules in our meeting and so let's talk about that at the next meeting a little more. I do want people to know that I, and. Clearly, I don't look at Facebook all that much because it's just a mess. But clearly, there are, as Sean said. There's a lot of false narratives going on about us being against. Events, which we are not, but I'll talk for myself, which I am not. But it is our responsibility to be fiscal managers for this village and so I do need to ask questions. Asking questions is not the same as being against an event. And it shouldn't be interpreted or implied that way, I actually do really, and I've said this multiple times, I really appreciate. When the Birdhouse Festival went on and then Family Fun Day, I think is an excellent event and I've said that multiple times. I am not against Family Fun Day, I never have been, so anyone who tells you differently is not telling you accurately what I've said in the past. I have always been supportive of Family Fun Day, I just have to have the conversation. With the board and with the public about how much should be dedicated to Family Fun Day, that's our responsibility to ask that question. In the past, we've been told that we've been urged to spend 25, 35, 40,000 dollars on Family Fun Day. Like that's what it costs, we were told, well, it's our responsibility to say. You know, that doesn't, that sounds like too much money to us, so. That doesn't mean we're against Family Fun Day, just means we are being, trying to be fiscally responsible based on the best of our judgment as elected representatives, which is our responsibility. So, though I am for Family Fun Day, I am for events in this village, alright? And you're hearing it straight from me and not some Facebook. Comment that, that has nothing to do with, with who I am, so. This is similar, this reminds me of, last year, we significantly raised funds for Family Fun Day by like at least $5,000 or more. And we fully funded the Birdhouse Project and the next day. There was an article in the Daily Gazette saying how those events were at risk. So if you wanna know why this is being politicized, it's not here, it's, it's, the task force is politicizing this purposely. For political reasons and you've heard it here tonight. I'm against, I'm against events, I'm not against, and that article was wrong, it was fed to Daily Gazette and they swallowed it hook, hook bait and sinker. And, and it's happening again tonight, I am not against these events. So I'm just gonna read what I wrote, part of what I wrote in the Facebook post, so you can see my actual position. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but parts of it, I admire the work of the task force, they've done some real good. But, much of what's said on Facebook, it cannot be taken at face value and have the effect of politicizing celebrations, which shouldn't be political. Here's my actual position. I disapprove of Mayor Rossi's decision to quote unquote roll over almost $10,000 of village funds. To the task force group without first having the purpose of the spending vetted and approved by the trustees, which is our responsibility. So, I'm happy, I'm very happy and grateful that there's a group of people willing to do something special and nice for the village. If you're gonna use $10,000 of village funds, we need to agree to that, we need to know what it is specifically and agree to it. That's just the way things should work. The. The next thing I say is I disagree with spending $18,000 on one day event, Family Fun Day and, and know based on evidence from last year and other experience. That this important event can be done for several thousands less. So again, it should be done, I don't think we have to spend quite 18,000 on it. I do favor making the mayor's events task force an official committee of the village, this would accomplish several goals. People outside the mayor and his sister's personal circle would feel more welcome to join and contribute. Members of the group, which is currently slated to be responsible for, this is the, the part that I did not. Get accurately, as Gina pointed out, I said you were responsible for over 46,000 in village funds. And that is not accurate, I was using that whole list in celebrations and that's why I was asking, is there some list? Of, of products that go to the task force and there isn't.
You were given a 10-page response to this 13-minute video, Ben, that listed exactly what went to whom. Out of the 46,000 and change, you had it on Wednesday, no, you had it Wednesday, this statement came out after Wednesday. You had it in your hands.
Clearly didn't read it.
Clearly not, so. But actually, 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 I read from it on Wednesday and listed them in real time to you on that Wednesday.
Add them in my head as you're, so anyway, so I apologize for saying 46,000 when the answer is 30,460 dollars according to Gina. So you're responsible, your group, members of your group are responsible for 30,460 dollars in village funds. And, they, if, if you were a committee, then your members of your group, we chose and vetted and approved by the entire village board. Currently, village trustees do not know exactly who was in this group, so you've got $30,000 of village taxpayer money, we don't even know who you are. I did not know that Ms. O'Connor was in the committee, did not know that Ms. DeBute was in the committee, we should know who is. Handling these funds and, and doing these activities, who else? And, and of course, it could change at any moment, it could change and. I appreciate, I appreciate.
Actually, actually, it's the mayor, because the mayor is the executive. The mayor executes these events. And in the case of where we don't have the resources to do it ourselves, or we may designate. Such as the lifeguards and Kegaris for Swimming on the Stars with Jen's help and the fire police itself, thank you Jen. With respect to the holiday parade, the SVPA, Memorial Day Parade, the different military. Base groups that run it each year. Okay, in the case of Family Fun Day, which is a legacy event that got canceled and has been brought back, as many of you know, and I've been here for a long time. And in the case of this Birdhouse Festival program that now has to change. It's something that's been going on for a number of years, okay, we don't have the resources or ability to execute it ourselves. So we go to volunteers, but at the end of the day, the buck does stop here. And you've got a full listing of profit and loss from Family Fun Day last year and still go out there and say. It can be done for less than $18,000 in expenses more or less.
It took me about six questions, six times, six efforts and six weeks.
We put it together, we, we put it together so it was accurate. And, and this is the thing, you, you don't want accuracy from people, you want your answers now, 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 when sometimes they take time.
That shouldn't take six weeks to, after an event to know how much.
How many, tell me the last event that you organized.
And then, in addition. To, the trustees should know who is, who is in the group, just like we know the committee on the arts, the park and tree board, the planning board. And.
If you're a member of the task force, please raise your hand.
We should.
Well, most of them lack, but.
Yeah, and so you gotta do there. And they can give you a full list.
Yep, we should have a list. And also, there'd be more accountability for spending, reducing the risk of spending $10,000 of taxpayer money in a project the trustee has not approved, so.
You're gonna get the answers, you were told that Wednesday and Brave said the same thing.
Apparently, this money's already been obligated, we had no choice, we're just gonna be told what's gonna happen.
How, how is it gonna be out here? Everything on the tentative budget has been obligated the same way, it can be changed. It's the tentative budget, Ben, it's the mayor's budget, you don't like it, propose the change. But when you propose a change, when you propose a change, I, as I told you three times in the last two weeks, please tell me what the flip side of that change is because you have to balance the budget.
Most of the items.
Oh, I've been able to balance it, Liz, thank you.
Most of the items in the budget. We can find out what's being spent or not. And when we ask a question, what's this line item for, we, we hopefully will get an answer.
You've gotten every answer.
I haven't gotten an answer to the 10,000, that's the only question I have. What is it for? It's a reasonable question and it doesn't mean I'm against the project, but I shouldn't be attacked for asking the question. That's my point there.
You're being exact to for listening to the man, you give you a full bowl of a blow-by-blow situation of. When you're gonna get the information, what the general topic is and even a little bit of a tease as to names involved in the situation. So you understand there's a real merit to what he's doing because he wouldn't mention Suzanne's name, et cetera. Without reason in this community and that's why people are upset with you.
Why not just tell us what you're thinking of doing? That's, just tell us what you're thinking of doing, I was confused because I thought I was about to hear it. And I was like, did I miss it? And it was never said, so that's all, but anyway.
We're going to have a program for children where they will be. They will be educated, as will their families. To go to safe places if they're being attacked or if they're being, somebody's trying to abduct them. We're gonna try and teach the symbol that I need help, we're going to try and have symbols in the stores. That's why I'm working with BSVP, we're gonna try and have psychologists there, so these kids get trained right. It's not all dealt together yet, there's a lot of moving parts, but you're forcing me to give you bits and pieces and you're gonna say. Well, how much are those psychologists gonna cost? I have no friggin' idea.
So, tonight we got, so the budget's almost due to be spent or to approve. And tonight we got, I've been asking for months for some information about what's going on, I still don't know how the woods being used, but.
Alright, I'll tell you how.
I know you have details, you have additional detail, that's fine.
The Voces and the trades teachers are already set up, he's already got the design, he's already got the measurements. He's gonna set up an assembly line and go through with the lumber and have the kids cut it out, the older kids. So that they will be able to turn it over to the little kids, then the art teachers are gonna work with the little kids. To paint these small figures and we got a number of other things going on, Ben, it's a big ball of stuff.
Alright, that's the most I've heard, so thank you very much.
It's not, it's not finished yet, so everybody out there is hearing this and they're gonna say, well, what, what's he mean by that? What's he mean by that? What's he mean by that? That's what I didn't wanna give you because that isn't professional. I would rather have, here it is in its entirety, here's what we're gonna do, but you have forced me now to go back to all these people.
Excuse me?
Yeah, I asked his permission and he gave it to me.
You forced me now to go. To is your tone of voice.
I'm trying, I, the mic is way the hell over there, I want people to hear. You forced me now to go back to the superintendent of schools, to BACC, to all the others. And say, alright, we gotta hurry this through, we can't think it out and get it right. Because we had a kid that was abducted last year in this town.
Right.
We, I wanna make sure the mic.
Yeah, they're gonna hear you, don't worry.
We had Suzanne Lyle, who 24?
26.
26 years ago was abducted in Albany with a local family involved. Her mother's been grieving that ever since, we wanna bring this to the forefront so we don't have one of your kids taken or one of your kids taken. We wanna make sure they know what to do, we wanna make sure that they're staying. Our symbol is gonna be Boston Spa, Village of Friends and a safe place for kids, how about that? Wouldn't that be nice? But it's not all done yet, Ben, give me a chance to get it done.
Ray, thank you for working on that, sounds like a valuable project. You can understand, I hope, my perspective.
I can't.
When I've been told that you're gonna come up and explain the project and then you do not.
In two weeks.
And I've been, that's fine, I've been asking for this for a couple months and it could have been done behind the scenes, but I thought it was gonna be done here and that's why I asked the question here.
It couldn't have been done behind the scenes because I have to tell everybody.
You can tell the boards.
We didn't have any of this information, the first text we.
It's only Ray, I only get Ray's permission here.
Alright, the final, the final comment I, I just wanna make is. What about when I was cut off before, when Sean was making the point about DPW, all I wanted to say was. That the conversation is a valuable one, this. This administration and prior has never calculated the cost of DPW. And presented that as part of these events costs and it's something that we, we've all agreed, we should work on and are working on apparently. And so it'd be good to have more information on that, but Sean bringing that forward is just part of this process and conversation. That is a valuable one to have and hopefully it will continue to develop.
I wasn't gonna speak, I, I think what I have contention with is. You, you held up, you were starting to hold up a motion of two local business owners who are trying to do a good thing for this community, bring some vibrancy. That conversation could have been held in new business, it could have been done in other places, but I, it was just. The question was asked, it was answered, but apparently that wasn't enough, so that's where I was frustrated. And I, we gotta move stuff forward, guys, we are stalled on things and it doesn't need to be work, working like that, so. I'm sorry you're offended by that, but I was more upset that it was being held up on these two business owners who are doing some good stuff. And it would have handled elsewhere in the agenda.
It wasn't held up, we did it.
Cause I had to move it along.
All I wanted was another sentence or two.
Well, she also has a right, and she also has a right to make sentences, Ben, and she called the question and she was recognized. And that's what the rules require of me. She made, she called the question and I asked Mary and Sean because you were talking if there was a second because. At that point, that motion has been made and so it was supposed to stop.
You're using motions to, to cut off democratic debate.
No, we're using, we're, we're using to cut off extraneous at that point because it was said three times at that point.
Extraneous.
Well, you know what, Ben, we're not here.
We think a lot of things you say is extraneous.
We don't, we don't, we don't allow filibusters here either, okay? So.
Now we know.
Yeah, we've got four people around me right now laughing at a joke, that's not even a joke, because when were there filibusters here? There weren't, it's always been you guys going, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. I enjoy being on this board, I think we all have a lot to contribute, we've got good ideas, but it seems like every single meeting since. The first one in January, there was a mention made of how. We're against the Democrats, we're, you know. Politicizing things, we're not and. I wish that we didn't have every meeting. That idea put in people's heads that it's the Democrats against Republicans, it's a table of us who should be looking out for the village, no matter what. What party we are, and I think that we have to remember that that should be our main goal.
There's no need to respond, there is no need.
Okay. I'm gonna say something about your sister.
Now, I'm gonna say something about in general right now, my turn.
I would talk to your sister who just told me to shut up from the audience. That is inappropriate and you should be.
Ben, I'm about to say the same in a much more dignified manner, so here we go. It's not so much the messaging all the time, Ben, that is the issue with, I have with you and sometimes Sean, but okay, I think it's most of the time. You and tonight exemplified it. You lay out a position.
You're not a filibuster, are you?
You lay out a position, hey. I would like more information about the 9,000, blah, 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 9640, I think it is. Great, you know what, you're right and you will get that, we told that on Wednesday, we're told that tonight. It just keeps going and going and going. As I said, you had the information at your disposal Wednesday. It was sent to you, it was in your hands, you were given the piece of paper that said what was task force, what wasn't task force. You decided to go on Facebook with this long diatribe that was full of falsehoods ultimately. Based on that, and you were also given an expense list of Family Fun Day of 23,000 dollars after it was done last year. And you still spout off, it's like if you stopped at the point of, hey, love what they do. Love a little bit more information, that's what I'm about here and, you know, I'm trying to do my job to mind your budget. I think everybody here would kind of been like, well, let it go. It, it, it might not get traction anyway if they wanted to fight you on it or whatever, or they wanted to piece it apart. But you, you went into these realms of the mayor. But you you went into these realms of the mayor's sister and this attack, and these people don't know who they are and what they are and everything. It's like, Ben, they're your neighbors. They may not be your friends, but they're your neighbors. They've shown up. They've shown up multiple times and done amazing things. And you still sit here and question them like they're complete strangers to the whole cause. It's just so endless and unnecessary, and it's been two years of it. Why? Because my name's Frank Rossi and I'm mayor. That's why, apparently. Even though I tell you to shut up half the time at these meetings, apparently they don't understand that, or they think that it's just this control mechanism. The hell of that? I respect my sister. I don't always agree with her, but who I do respect is all the volunteers that show up every time. The Democrats and the no parties and the Republicans alike, okay? And enough's enough. And this whole thing, it's partisan, it's partisan. I learned from a post on the Dems page that Sean's actually not a Dem. You're no party. Yeah, so. Throw, 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 throw out the partisan question for the love of God, because I never asked and didn't care. I really don't. I disagree with you on certain issues. I agree with you on others, okay? And we'll argue, and we'll go at it like cats and dogs.
I'll be no party, because then we can get this.
Well, we tried. We we tried that a few years ago, and that's sort of been work, right? But look, we we go at it, then we bust each other about the Cowboys or this sport or that sport. And we might, but the point is this. Love you more. The the long story longer, as Jeff would say to all of us, Jeff Garry's, I love him, is Ben, take a look around you. Sometimes think before you talk, think before you write, because you're hurting people in the process. Not just the kids that might not get what they want, but you know, hopefully we do go in the right direction on these things. And the family said, no, wouldn't get what they want, but you're hurting your neighbors. You're hurting people that should be your friends at the end of the day.
I get to respond. Because you're talking to me, I get to respond. I should be able to respond. You're filibustering, but I'll wait till you're done and then I'll respond. You filibustering, so.
Again, I I I don't know what else to say besides.
Right.
Take a step back, take a breath sometimes before you talk. I think Bob Bush said it best tonight, which was stop at a certain point before you go too far. You just go too far too many times, and I think we saw it this week.
So what happened at this meeting was multiple people got up and attacked me, and I feel the need to respond. And the reason they're attacking me is because they have a political agenda, because they're associated. They're associated with you, Frank.
Yeah, okay.
And there are people who would want to participate in in events, and when they hear who's involved, they run the other way. Because they know that what your group is about.
Taking a motion. A motion that the vouchers be audited and the meeting be adjourned at ten fifty-six P M. Trustee Padeta, trustee Raymond, discussion, all in favor? Oppose, motion carries.